Meeting to order at six thirty-five?
Yeah.
Every once in a while you get a call.
Yeah, you gotta really go watch that.
So did everybody have a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there any?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we want to have a discussion on anything? Right. So all, so all that approve? Aye. And all against? Okay, so that, that passes unanimously? And the next item, do we have any guests that wanna speak? Anybody sign in? I see, I see some guests, but I don't know if they want it.
She said she's warming up and she'll speak by the time school opens again, right?
Alright. No student representative? Let them out of the school and they don't show up for anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, new, new business? So, what's, bids for?
Okay.
For the summer?
New business A, superintendent? Approval for summer bids?
Yep.
So Kathy informs me that you take this vote every year to give me the authority to approve contracts as they come in over the summer. Things like the after-school program, things like that.
Is there, is there any specific things that we have to approve in this, or is it just, is it just a blanket? Okay, I do know that there's some specific ones we us, we usually did in the fall that were different, right?
Was there, was there a cap on this? No, I understand, but you know, after a certain amount of money comes back to the school committee.
July one to August twenty-sixth, when they're back in. I think it's something to put in the business office manual. If my recollection serves me, I think it was under five thousand and anything over five thousand, I think came back to the school committee.
That's, yeah, so that'd be a contract, but a bid would be obviously something that is within the bid threshold. So is that, is that what we mean here? Which is over fifty thousand?
No, we mean contract.
We mean contracts, so not bids, alright? That's what I thought, but I just wanna be clear on the language, 'cause that's two different things. And it's contracts and it's like the CCD will come back, yeah, GAA comes back, yeah, okay, yep. So it's contract, not bids.
Cafeteria milk and ice cream, those kind of things, those part of it, used to be part of it?
No, so that, you mean like for food service?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so that's just a renewal, like, that we'll have to sign.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, um, give our superintendent the permission to approve summer bids up to five thousand dollars cap, after which it would come to the school committee.
So again, we wanna be clear on the language, it'd be summer contracts, not bids.
Summer contracts?
Contracts.
Yeah. So, the, good point, so we should, you're saying that we should change the?
Yeah, it should be contracts and not bids, yeah.
This item as well, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I will, I will amend my motion to say, I'll make a motion to, uh, give permission to our superintendent to approve summer contracts up to five thousand dollars, after which they would come to the school committee for discussion and approval.
Okay, wait a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all four?
Aye.
Right? And all against? Right, guess that's, oh. Esports?
Hi guys.
Hello.
So, um, about two weeks ago I sat in a webinar, um, to get a better understanding of what esports was. So some language in the document that you probably have in front of you, we need to rephrase it to being a sport. But it came out this past year, um, some of the area schools in the areas, McDuffie and Mahar, actually ran it last year. It's pretty, it's pretty popular, it's growing rapidly across the state. We were hoping to pilot it this next year. I did put a survey out to the students here at the high school, junior high, and I'm really excited, I got eleven responses. And ninety percent of them said yes. So with esports, to give you a better idea of what it is, you need six on a team. It's an interactive gaming, um, game, where a lot of our gaming community students can compete against students in other schools. So for example, McDuffie or Mahar. I did have several conversations with, um, the coach over at Mahar and should try to understand, like, I'm not a gamer, I'm really kind of naive to this whole idea, but he broke it down for me around costs and he did recommend that we start, you know, baby steps. So to run it as, you know, a sport, it would be very similar to, um, a user fee and following the same rules around the MIA. The MIA does oversee the MSSA, which launched this program. And the software's free, it's sixty-four dollars a student to sign up, um, to participate in the program. So really what you have here is student A would pay the sixty-four dollars that can be absorbed in the user fee and we would register as a school. You then sign up and you get like a game schedule and you play other schools. And you can't have a substitute, so for those eleven students, we wouldn't turn anybody away. We would, we have the opportunity to run two teams, we could run two teams. You could have a Team A and a Team B. I believe that McDuffie has two teams, um, and you run two different seasons. So the cool thing about it, which I learned, 'cause I was a little concerned about it being overseen by the MIA, is because our school's so small, you know, a lot of our students are athletes here at the school. So if student A is a basketball player, they can still, because the seasons do overlap a little bit, they can still do both. Because it, although it falls under the MIA jurisdiction, it is overseen by the MSSA. So it's kinda cool, they can do both, um, so I got some clarity around that. And we're looking to offer it as a pilot next, this coming school year for the kids. We have a percentage of our population here at the school that are gamers and they're really tech-driven. So I asked them two questions on the survey. The other question, you're probably gonna ask me around what's it gonna cost? Aside from the sixty-four dollars and building in like the user fee that an athlete would pay? I asked the students, and this is common too, they did this at Mahar, is gaming students, um, the tendency to be very protective over their gaming equipment? So they like their own headset, they like their own gaming equipment. So that's something that I would have to work with David on to bring that equipment here to the school. So we're talking like a headset and their computer. So I know that they're very specific, but we would purchase the software. And some of the software in League of Legends, I believe that's a fall league, it starts late fall, almost similar time to Unified Basketball, and Rocket League, I believe those are free, okay? There is some software, Smite I believe costs money. So I think that we're gonna start small and pilot it and see what our, if you look at the cost breakdown, those will be projected for the following year. We would have, um, a stipend of eighteen sixty-two seventy-two, that's the lowest stipend for a JV coach. That falls on the schedule for coaches here. But the five thousand, if everything goes well, not very well, we could have a team of twenty-five next year. So we kinda wanted to just test the waters a little bit and see how popular it actually is for the kids.
Can I ask a question? You said, um, kids would play basketball because the seasons overlap. Is there a specific time that they're gaming?
After school.
After school, and what about basketball games? Are they gonna, are those times between the gaming and the basketball, is it gonna overlap?
Yeah, so the gaming, I would have to really go back and look at the exact, actual start times. We know basketball starts at five thirty and seven, like those are set in stone, they never change. But I said like late fall, I believe I wanna say October and basketball starts the first Monday, October.
I was more thinking the times, like, are they going to be gaming and hurry up, get ready, we gotta get on the court?
Yeah, I hope not. I mean, I haven't heard anything, but they did reassure me when I was on that webinar that they could do both.
And is it a limited amount of time, like they only game that day for two hours or an hour and a half?
So they, it's similar to a sports schedule, they would have games against other schools. So I'm curious to see if any of the schools are actually, you know, signing up and looking to pilot it at their school. We could probably play at McDuffie a few times and at Mahar a few times.
So it'll only be the ones that are local, right here?
Nope, nope, not at all. The cool thing is, like, you don't have to get on a bus to go anywhere.
Right.
You can game right from room one oh two. Um, so we'll have to, you know, figure that out, I mean, it's new, like anything. We're just really trying to, um, fulfill the interest of, you know, a lot of our students here at the school in this. Obviously, we know kiddos are, they love gaming, so we think it'd be pretty popular for them.
Just to add, just to be clear, we are gonna charge them a fee as if they were on any other varsity or JV team. And we talked about it being a club team or not, and because the MIA sanctions this, um, we felt it was, um, I think in our best interest to charge them, uh, the fee that we would charge any other athlete to play a sport. So some of that, and correct me if I'm wrong, some of that hundred and fifty, whatever the fee is, we would then use to pay the sixty-four dollars per player. Some of that would then go to the stipend for the coach advisor and for the first year as a pilot, it would cost us some minimal amount of, of money. But that's again asking whoever is on the team to bring their own gaming equipment to the school. So a keyboard, I'm assuming a hard drive, headsets, like whatever, whatever peripherals they would need for the gaming, we're gonna ask them to bring that. If it's a hit and we like it, then that's where that about five thousand dollars comes in for next year, where we would purchase equipment for, for that team. So we're gonna try to offset some of the costs even this year with the user fee, um, but there would still be a minimal cost even as a pilot this year, or next year.
So the pilot fee would just be those students who have their own equipment?
The fee for this, the one hundred?
Well, no, 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 what I'm saying is the pilot program this year would only be for those students who already have like their own equipment?
Yeah, so I understand, right? So a kid wants to join the team, um, maybe all eleven of those kids don't have their own equipment, right? So I think the logistics we still have to work through, um, that's an excellent question, um, but yeah, we'd have to kinda, we'd have to kinda work through that and see how it goes. Just, I have minimal knowledge of League of Legends and I know there's six kids, um, that play at one time, you might have one or two subs. So eleven might be too much for one team and not enough for two teams. So again, we'd have to, we'd have to see. I just wanna be clear on the cost and us trying to offset the cost.
When I was reading, it's, um, I think they could be like five and six?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they don't have to be, I think the max was six?
Okay. Like I said, I have minimal knowledge, so, um, I just wanna be clear on the cost and, and what it would cost us.
Another benefit is like it's coed, it's fully inclusive, which is great. And they offer scholarships, you know, for esports, colleges, universities, for active players for their teams, um, and the STEM engagement. So we're really looking to tap into, you know, different, you know, students that have different interests.
Again, the stipend is built in, but can you just talk about what other stipend we pay for? There's a strategic gaming stipend?
Right, so we do have a club here at the school, so I'm curious to see, and I left it, I think I can look in Google Form to see who responded, which I didn't do that, I just was really excited, I got eleven responses, um, after, you know, sending it out, which tells you that they're interested because I did do this a few days ago. And I did not expect any kids to be looking in their emails, but what was your question?
So, I wanted to just be clear that we also have the stipend built into the FY twenty budget. It, it was built in there, we didn't just think of this overnight. So it was built in with the intent that we were gonna do something, um, but we're gonna try to tie it in with the strategic gaming club and make it kinda all work together, so.
So those, those students could be, very well could be the same exact students because they probably go hand in hand. But I'll know more, you know, as time gets closer. Like any, you know, thing at the school, we put up the program registration and then we go from there and we see how it goes.
Do you have interest of somebody who would be the coach or advisor?
Yeah, so we're talking about that, it takes a really special person to do that. I'm sure, like, we would have to put it out there and see. I'm sure that we have a lot of talented teachers on our staff?
Good.
That are very tech-friendly.
Good.
Was the coach from Mahar, like, they started two years ago or something? He said he had no idea what he was doing when he started or something and?
And now he's like the role model for the school. Which is really cool.
We have some teachers, male teachers that are definitely into gaming that I can name off the top of my head right now, so.
Does any of them?
My two boys are.
Did they respond to the survey?
I didn't ask, but I don't know. Well, my other thing is, we're, if they're bringing their own equipment, because I know like my son has worked very hard to earn the money to pay for stuff, it's gonna have to be locked up, because, you know, as they're learning to replace the parts, they are expensive, so. Yeah, they both are gamers, but I know of a couple teachers that they have talked to about the games that they play online through Steam and other, um, I don't know if you call them networks or whatnot, but I know that they've had conversations with them, that they've spoken with me at home, so I know that there's probably been.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, I would say probably a billion-dollar, um, up and coming thing. Again, I don't have kids the age of gaming yet, um, but yeah, it is, it is a pretty big industry, so.
So are we all set with, you know, with the network capacity that we'll need for that? 'Cause I, I do know that there was some, that Jay brought some stuff up about the high school specifically about the speed.
Yeah, so we definitely have to work with David, you know, put a bug in his ear multiple times, and with David's in a good place next week.
Again, there's a lot of logistics that we need to figure out, but it was kind of like, let's get this in front and see if it's something that we would?
Yeah.
Know, support, and then we'll kind of go down the road on, on what's necessary.
We'll figure it out, we have a good team, you know, kind of, so.
So the, the person who's in charge of the strategic gaming club, can that person be the coach at the same time? Or is, is, does it mean that we have the same person doing two different things? How does that work?
I mean, she could apply, right, she very well could. I don't know, I would have to really have a conversation with what the strategic gaming club really is? And how similar that is.
So I'm, I'm still not entirely clear on the five thousand that is mentioned on that document that you shared with us? And people bringing their own? If they do bring their own, we don't need to spend that five thousand?
So it would be projected, and I wish I could, I wish I had time to go back and write the word projected in that document, because it was really a conversation that I had with Steve and Adam.
It's too late now, so.
And what?
It's too late now.
And I said I'm gonna run back in and then I saw people parked in the back and I was like, I'm gonna go yell at them. So instead of going back in to correct the document, I figured I would just throw it out there that it would be projected cost. So we wanna take baby steps with this, you know, and the kids are gonna know a lot more than we do about it, so we'll learn a lot from them. You know, what is the most popular, um, game to play in and?
So best case scenario, it could simply be the stipend, which could also be at least partially?
Correct.
Um, compensated through the fees that will be collected?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But then you said that that's already built into the budget anyway.
Yeah, so the stipend, we already have the stipend built, so when we talked about this while we were building the budget, we really didn't know anything about this, what the costs would be, it was kind of just like a idea, let's put the stipend in there and we'll go from there. Again, the, the, the five thousand would be for us next year, if it worked out, for us to supply everything we would need for our esports team.
When you say next year, not this coming?
Yeah, for the following school year, right. Now, we could, we could get six or seven kids that really wanna play, but they say, no, I'm not gonna bring my own stuff to school. But they really wanna play, it might be something that we have to look at and say, okay, we might need to provide these students with, um, whatever they need. Then we might have to be back here asking for that or not. So again, it was a, an idea, we wanted to make sure we got the very basic into the budget and then kind of go from there.
Yeah, very well could just be headsets, you know, and just, and kids have their own headsets. So it, it really could just be that, and we would be putting the software on the computers, but that's a conversation I would have to have with David. So it's just like installing, downloading an app on your phone. And I'm sure the kids, a lot of them already have some of these apps and are familiar with it. So it would really be kinda like MCAS, you know, we put test nav on all the computers. So we would really have to identify six or seven computers or so to put this gaming software on. But I would have this conversation with David to see where is the best place in the building to do this and to run it where we have the speed. 'Cause we are taking away a whole computer lab, um, it's kind of a seasonal classroom.
Are you aware of any other school districts that are initiating it this year?
Initiating it this year?
In Western Mass?
I am not, but there were several people on the webinar.
Yeah, there was a lot of people on the webinar, yeah.
Assistant principals, athletic directors, business managers, there was a lot of people on that webinar.
I did a quick Google search and I only bumped into Monson, and they're mentioning that they're, you know, they're planning on starting esports.
Yeah, Monson was on that, that call too.
It would be good to know what, you know, what we're looking at. So, um, it might have been here on this, you know, literature that you shared as well, but it looks like five states are piloting it, including Massachusetts, so it's a fairly new thing, but it's, other states are thinking about coming in. And as you said, in Massachusetts, it's been a big thing. So with that, their competition, would it be against teams within the state? Or do they have interstate competitions as well in this?
I would say within the state. And I don't, Emery, I wish I could give you a hundred percent honest answer, but I would say within the state, as it's an MIA, it's overseen by the Massachusetts Interstate Sports.
So it would not even be with the western side of the state?
No, it would.
You mean the eastern side of the state?
It could, it could very well be, the way they're running tournament alignments now, it very well could be.
Okay, I mean, probably from a gamer's perspective, and I really don't wanna underemphasize the STEM component of it, which was the part that excited me, 'cause gaming is gaming, anybody can go home and game, and that's good. And I understand this is turning into a sport, ESPN is showing it and, you know, other channels, you know? Uh, so it is, it has become that, but I also hope that it's gonna be something that stimulates their thinking in terms of technology and then they wanna learn more, so we can work this into something else, which would be interesting, uh, in my mind, that we could work a sport into academics, uh, but I, I couldn't find anything related to that. So maybe it's something that we're gonna learn in this pilot year. And, and what do you do if you don't get five, six students to sign up?
Like I said, I'm happy, I have eleven responses.
Right, no, that's, that's awesome, but what if they just don't show up?
I mean, if someone signs up, I would say, and they pay a user fee of a hundred and fifty, the parents are gonna make sure that they're there.
Oh, no, just, I was, I was saying that they did not commit yet, they just showed an interest, right?
Correct, correct.
And school opens and they say, you know what, uh, your survey sounded good, but right now, I don't know.
It very well could happen.
Okay.
It very well could happen. But again, I think I've said this before, when, you know, talking about other things, other initiatives that we've brought in, you know, we have a good team behind it and we've been very successful with our new offerings here at the school?
Yes.
Over the last year.
Would we engage the coach that after we have a certain number of students?
Um, well, I feel like we already posted someone's stipend looking at that day, because she's my postings lady. I don't know if that position was on there, because the timeline with it being passed on Monday, you know?
Right.
Right. So I know that the other one was, but that was the club, but this is different, so I don't think we're waiting for Monday to see, you know, what came out.
And what is the sign up for sports for next semester?
Well, it's open now.
It's open? So, so these students may, may come any day and sign up?
It opened two weeks ago and all I had to do was add in, but I didn't wanna add in esports without the approval of the school committee.
And we appreciate it.
Process. Can I go on my evaluation?
Another email went out to student, to families today, 'cause I know I received it about fall registration for sports, so.
Cool.
Yeah, it's not on there yet, but it's easy just to add in a section.
And that posting goes out to all staff?
I spoke with David this morning and begged him for access of the grade six moving over to grade seven, so I can contact the parents at least, because that's something that we usually don't get, um, access to until mid-July.
I'm not talking students, I'm talking staff, the posting for the.
Oh, it should, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
It should, like, I mean.
Well, I'm only asking because last year was a misunderstanding and it didn't, all postings, some postings didn't. So watching out for my members.
And Ally, what's the, what are the grades that will be included or that can?
Seven twelve.
Okay. Alright. I, I think I consumed all my fifteen questions.
Let's hurry up before you have anymore.
That's it for the night.
Yeah.
Now that I have a lot of free time.
Alright, so have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, what did you want to make that motion? You were writing a motion, right?
Yeah.
What motion is this?
It's a pilot program.
I'll make a motion to approve the pilot for esports for the school year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Okay. So is there a second?
No, second one.
Alright, so all four? Aye?
Aye.
And all against? Okay. So you're gonna come back and let us know how that turned out, right?
Yes.
Like how many?
Yes, I can do that.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to find out how we cheer teams that are playing esports.
So again, my limited knowledge of esports. In reading this, I don't know if anyone read the whole thing, but if you made it to the championship, you do perform like on a live stage in front of like a live audience where it's like projected on like large screens and, so again, I have very limited and minimal knowledge of esports. I just know. Huh?
They would stay here?
No, so that would, you would have to travel. So there would, they, they would host it somewhere and that's where you would travel, but there would be, you know, like, you would play in front of.
Which is limited knowledge, you will tell the.
Very limited knowledge, I have, I just happen to know that, yes, yes.
That's great knowledge though.
Yeah. Yes. Happy to help.
Right, so the next item is, uh, Planet Eight?
Yes, so I had a meeting, Stephen Sullivan actually handed me a business card of, um, this lady that Amy met with last week. He gave it to me at the beginning of the school year and suggested I reach out to try to establish a partnership, um, relationship with this organization, a five-oh-one-three-C nonprofit organization, Planet Eight, to bring in revenue through athletics. And we're not looking at crazy amount of revenue, um, trying to get involved within the community more through athletics. It's been one of my goals since I took on the AD job, um, to build that relationship. I did meet with the lady last week, walked around the building and tried to find a nice little home for the bright yellow bins. We did land a surveillance area, um, in back and where the new black gate is in between most schools. It's an easy area for the elementary students driving in and around the loop, so they have plenty of areas to park and make their donation. It's five cents, um, per pound, so really they come once a week. Um, my, my very first question was, what happens when people are dumping illegally? Because I don't like clutter, so I hate trash on the ground. And she said she works with a lot of schools, and yes, there are some places, there's a place in town, um, at Dunkin' Donuts, where you drive by and it's, it's, there's not a lot of curb appeal to it. She said, but people are very respectful on school property. She also said it being under surveillance and you can put a sign too is very helpful, because they will work with the local police department and ticket people and offer citations for people for illegally dumping. She said that at schools, there's a different respect, um, with people donating. So we tried to find a common area, um, which is not super close to the road, but out of the danger zone for people that wanted to, you know, donate. So in the back in between the two buildings was the best spot. So the lady was really nice and I took all of her paperwork and, you know, told her that I would. Um, so the lady was really nice and I took all her paperwork and, you know, told her that I would talk to the school committee. Talk to Cheryl about it and talk to Steve and Adam about it and everybody's kind of on board, um, to, you know, collaborate with Planet Aid and bring them. And they do have a couple bins in Granby as well. So at the early mug, they have one, um, at the Dunkin' Donuts, they have one. I'm not quite sure, but I myself have personally donated when driving around town. Sometimes it's a struggle looking for them.
I think there's one at BP too, for Shell.
But it's nice to have something here in the school because we're all on one campus. You know, parents are probably always donating clothes. The kids are growing out of their clothes, you know, five minutes, so.
You said it was one, they pick up once a week?
They do, they pick up once a week. Yep, and then we do bring in two bins.
So I have two questions. One is, I recall having this in the past, I don't know how far back, maybe a year or two ago, we had something similar. I wonder if this was the same organization, but did we have something ongoing? I guess not, since.
So the only thing I can remember, which jogs my memory, was something with recycling.
Yes, so the PTO.
It was, I thought it was clothing.
It was the same thing, it was. They had the PTO on, um, recycle day, had a bin that was in here.
So you're, you're, um, going in the direction of my second question as well. What, is this something that allows our PTO or Booster Club to raise funds that we are now interfering? Or are they not using this type of revenue generation?
No, it would be a separate.
Okay.
I asked that specific question to the lady who was coming, you know, that they had, you know, an athletic organization or something. She said, really, it's what, it could be under the school's name, it could be under specifically athletics. It's just really who to call when, you know, and who to put the name on the bin, who assign, they assign it to.
And the PTO doesn't do that recycling day at all?
No.
Well, no, but it's kind of changed a little bit, but that's, that's always something that, like, I know who puts that on, I think my wife is actually one of them, but, um.
Boy Scouts?
Huh?
The Boy Scouts?
The Boy Scouts, and I think the PTO kind of has a little bit of a piece of it, or they did last year with the boosters, but they can kind of know going in, like one day they'll decide who's going to do what. And then it just happens from there, so I don't think those will compete too much with it.
Yeah, I think this is more of a year round project, with those organizations are led one day or like a series of days throughout the year. It's not continuous in this, you know. I feel like I just saw something on the Facebook world about, um, the PTO or someone doing, maybe it was, it was one of the organizations in Granby in the community was doing another bottle and can drag, so I know that they do a lot of those. And I know the Booster Club, I work with Sammy Sosa, you know, she always gives me a heads up on when they're doing theirs. But those are bottles and cans, we're talking clothing, toys, um, hopefully not couches.
Well, that's my biggest fear is that, that stuff that people are just trying to jump, drop off, so they don't have to pay to get rid of it, right?
I agree with you a hundred percent and I will pick that thing up myself and bring it out here.
So, so if we, if we were to do this, are we locked into some sort of a long-term agreement with them? Or if it didn't work, would, would we be able to, you know, ask them to remove it, I guess?
She said to me, if it doesn't work out, then we'll come get our bins.
Okay.
I asked her that, I said, if this is something that, you know, can we move the bins? Cause I was concerned about them being so far away, can we move them to somewhere that's up close and more visible? She said, let's, you know, start small and go from there. So I feel like that's a, you know, it's like our, yeah, we are flexible, right? But we have that, you know, the Granby to Go program and that's been a hit. So just keep continuing to build relationships in the community and I think it's a nice way for our community to give back and really for everyone to get involved.
How would this message get out?
Right, um, we could send it out to my report, we could tweet it, I'm not shy with the Twitter, you know, or the Facebook. I, you know, hit the checkbox every time we send out a blackboard connect. So announcements, how we do normally with things.
Put some on the website too.
Up on the website, I don't know if Planet Aid themselves like has, um, if they put on their website. I feel like when I looked, I don't know if they listed who hosts bins, but they very well could.
And again, just to repeat what Ally said, we're trying to be strategic in where we place it. So that place that we are planning on putting it is in view of one of our cameras. So would help us, you know, if somebody were to put something there that it's not supposed to be, we would be able to kind of monitor that, so.
So, just one more, probably going way out, way, way too far, but do we have to worry about like a security issue of some sort with bringing people, you know, on the campus?
People are on the campus all the time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we have, to be honest, we have people walking our dogs around here all the time, which I can't stand anyway. So yeah, I don't think it would, I don't think it would. And like Ally said, so we're trying to put them, position them far enough back where we're not inviting everybody that drives up and down two oh two to donate, even though we love it, and it's more for our parents who are making the loop in the parking lot to be like, oh, you know, there's a place for us to donate and do it that way. Cause we discussed probably five or six different places on where to, where to put them and where was the most appealing and least appealing and, and, you know. To be honest, for five cents for every pound that gets donated, we spent a lot of time on trying to figure this out, so.
Yes.
Worth giving a try.
Yeah.
As a mother, like, I'm very picky on my drop off for donations, you know, sometimes I'll go to Goodwill, but sometimes I like to have a very, you know, private area to go and somewhere safe. So I think like what better than a school to be able to have that. And just know, like, now I can bring all my stuff to school and once word gets out there and once the thirty, thirty-five staff over at East Meadow and the thirty-five here at school, once everybody is, you know, aware that the bin is here, word will spread throughout the community.
Worth a try, I think. Worth a try.
So we need a vote?
Make a motion to put bins in for Planet Aid in a specified rotation?
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Right, so all four?
Aye.
Aye. And all against? Next one is Adam. Transfer fiscal nineteen funds?
So, um, we don't necessarily need to vote for this, although when I first put this on the agenda, I thought we might have to. Um, so we don't have to vote on it, but we can certainly talk about it. So as of, um, today, and this number will change because Nancy either finished a warrant today or we'll finish with it tomorrow. Um, so I can certainly update everybody tomorrow, once that warrant is finalized. We'll have about a hundred and twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, um, available to purchase our technology and, and, um, implement the one-to-one. The reason we need to transfer is because it's kind of in some supply lines at the high school, East Meadow, um, so it's kind of all around. Um, so I just, we don't necessarily need to vote because I'm not taking it from any one cost center and moving it to another. Um, it's more for, uh, an FYI that I will be transferring some monies, um, into our technology line to, um, get us up and going with the one-to-one, uh, implementation and some of the software, um, upgrades that we need and all that stuff. So which David and I have already started, uh, working on, so some of that stuff has been purchased already. Um, and our bid went out for our Chromebooks. Um, it will be due back and I can talk a little more about this in the, when I report out, but that bid is coming back on the twenty-seventh and we hope to award it on the twenty-eighth for the Chromebooks. Um, so again, this was, um, just more of an FYI, we have about a hundred and twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars available. I'm going to move it in order for us to purchase, um, our one-to-one, uh, technology that we planned on doing.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Um, so this is transferring between line items, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So I think we made a decision that if there are, uh, movements between line items over a certain amount, for, uh, clarity and for accountability, we would bring it to the school committee and I'm, I appreciate that we did.
Yeah.
And I think we decided that we would vote on that transfer between line items. So we, you know, I think it's good practice for us to do that.
So, so of course I have that information, didn't think we would need, I don't remember us talking about, but that's fine, so.
It was before you got here.
I don't want to wait till, actually it doesn't really matter, we could wait, I guess, until next school committee for me to, um, bring those transfers, vote on it, move the money and it, it would still leave us a couple of days or we can.
Does this, does this need to be done before the end of this month?
Yeah, so I gotta get the money where it needs to be in order for us to, to close the bid and, and order on, based on the bid that we get back.
Uh, so if you don't mind, just to understand.
Yeah.
Your concern is that you don't have the exact number?
I have the exact number, I have to get it into the lines for you guys to approve, so I have to move it. If you want to see the actual transfers and approve the actual transfers, I have to get that in front of you. Is what I'm saying.
How many lines is this coming out of?
Yeah, I thought, I thought you mentioned.
Two or three, so it's in supply lines right now, so it might be in like a sped supply line, a high school supply line, so it's gotta go, I just have to move it, if we want to do it the right way, into the technology line and procure everything out of that one line. And if you want to see those and, and approve those prior to us actually allocating the funds, then it would have to wait till the next meeting.
What's today?
You're not winning that meeting either.
And that's, this is the last one of the month or do we have another?
Yeah, it is the last one.
It's, yep.
And I think we looked at it as these are all supply lines.
Right, so, so the law would be that if it moves from cost center, like a salaries to a supplier or something like that, then the school committee would have to vote on it.
That's what I was just thinking.
Um, we kind of adopted our own policy that you, we still want to see the transfers.
And just very quickly, the reason for that was that understandably, schools have control over their own, own budgets. And unlike, uh, other, uh, town departments, uh, money can be moved between line items.
Yeah.
But it came to a point, uh, where, you know, the public perception was that the money was basically circulating without any accountability in our budget. That was one. Number two, for our planning purposes, we did, we seemed to lose track at times that things were moving from one line item to the other one and we did not understand what the reasons were. Uh, we wanted to really make sure that our numbers were helping us better forecast the following year's budgets. And without understanding the reasons, that was not possible. So with all that, we made a decision, I don't know if it was last year or the year before that, we voted that, uh, above a certain amount, we would ask for that, uh, to be presented to the school committee. Not because school committee would have objections to normal transfers of, of, uh, funds.
Right.
But would like to be informed and have a say in the approval of those transfers.
No, I, I, I mean, that's, I understand, I, I think that's a good practice, even though it's, you're not technically supposed to. I think that that's a good practice in order to, you know, keep everyone up to date on what is going on.
So, again, just not to put you on the spot, how, how difficult is it to find that information if you were to spend ten minutes, fifteen minutes? Is it that easy or is it something that you need to dig out?
Right now?
Yeah.
Um, so what level detail do you want, like actual, from, you want the actual account that it's coming from to the other account? Or do you want just the amount that we're transferring from?
So from each department, the top level, each department, um, how much is coming from the departments within the school? How much is moving over to the technology force from supplies?
I can get that.
Can we do it during this meeting? Okay, then I think if, I'm speaking, but you know, I think that would help us.
So we also, I need an executive session, so that would give you a little bit extra time as well, if we came back to an open meeting out of executive session.
There's a question, I know I'm coming late, the budget's all done and solved, but the, if it's coming out of supplies, is there still enough money to get the supplies into the schools that are needed? If you're taking money out, what, is there still enough money to get the supplies they need for next year or?
So the next year's supplies will come out of next year's budget, so as soon as July one hits, will be into FY twenty budget. So what we're using is FY nineteen money to purchase our technology.
But there's enough in next year's budget to get the.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 certainly, yes, yes, yep, sorry, yes.
And I'm sure the, the people who run those supply lines know this has happened.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yep, yep, certainly.
Thank God.
You're welcome.
So the next item is a date for next year's school committee meetings.
So I'm wondering if you would like to take, um, old business B, the workshop model together. Um, I put in your folder a workshop model in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty meeting dates document. The grid you have at the top is a, um, draft of what the workshops agenda could look like. And then underneath are the proposed, uh, nineteen, twenty school committee dates. Um, noting that we had some discussion about moving to Tuesdays, so that if we needed to be at a select board meeting, we would have more opportunity for that. And I did try to put down important dates that shifted, um, when we might meet. Uh, most of those are Monday. So for example, October fourteenth is Columbus Day, November eleventh is Veterans Day, um, the breaks, um, we did end up falling on the winter break. I didn't, I mean, the spring break, I didn't know if that would be an issue for anybody, uh, but we have May eighteenth as local elections and May twenty-fifth is Memorial Day.
Right, yeah, cause I had asked that we have some more talks about the workshop model? So that we, we kind of, cause I think we had more open, you know, ideas than actually planned, right?
So I had the first Mondays of the month as business meetings and then the second meeting of the month, which is italicized as your workshop model.
Do you mind? No, go ahead. Um, so I think the reason why we proposed this model, it was because at times it was becoming a little bit of a hassle for folks to take time from their day to meet outside the school committee meetings.
Correct.
Uh, otherwise there is really no restriction, even in the presence of this model, even if we were meeting, uh, in a workshop model, every, the other, uh, meeting that we have, we still have the opportunity to move, to meet outside the school committee meetings. Or alternatively, I, I guess the school committee has the option to say, we don't really want this, we want to meet outside and then we'll continue with the regular structure and then, uh, count on everyone's availability outside the school committee meetings so that we can conduct the business. Again, the primary challenge was, given that finance, community relations, uh, policy, advocacy, they became key elements of our, uh, strategic plan, we wanted to make sure that enough time was spent on those items.
No, I, I, I also think that there might be some of these workshop, you know, meetings that we might have to do business because something's come up or we couldn't get to something and we had to kind of push it off to the next meeting.
So if you notice, the six thirty to seven is standing reports, um, we would post for that as a, um, beginning of a school committee meeting and then break out into the subcommittees. But if we were going to conduct business that carried over, we would have to put that on the agenda so that we, um, met the open meeting law notification.
Yeah, I figured we would probably know, know that ahead of time, that we needed to put something on there, so it wouldn't be a big, a big problem.
Yeah, also there's a loophole here that our chair doesn't have to be here at all.
I, I looked at my notes a thousand times, I was like, Mike Simpson didn't, he didn't show up or anything, he didn't volunteer. But then I thought maybe he was the ghost that could float in and out and he could sub, he could be our, he could be our utility player.
So what I'm on too.
Right. Right, so when, when you all were discussing this, I kind of was like, I'm not sure we're getting the big picture and I thought we would get the big picture when I put it down. If you notice, the, the first meeting is longer, seven to eight thirty, um, because those are really the meat and potatoes of what the strategic plan called for from the school committee, which is the budget and finance and the community relations. Those were the big nuggets. Um, then eight thirty to nine, um, policy and advocacy, those are typically, can go pretty quickly. Um, it's just notification, it's can we write this letter, can we bring this to school committee next time? Um, and then the building committee, really, that's going to wrap up relatively quickly. So that eight thirty to nine, I think, um, is a lesser load, it's a, it's a lighter load. Um, and probably will not go on the entire year either. Um, is a lesser load. It's a, it's a lighter load. Um, and probably will not go on the entire year either.
Well, so I think, um, what would be the issues? Cause there was a couple of them that I, I wanted to continue to do, but other people. Wanted to try them, so I, I just kinda stayed back, but I still have interest in, um, you know, a couple of them. Even if there's two people, if I were there, would that, would that be an issue? Like if I were sitting in on the meeting too? Cause now all of a sudden we're at a quorum, right? And I, I just don't know.
Um. If, if you're not participating in the conversation and you're not part of a vote, you're basically listening in, as you said. You're not considered part of that because you're not really part of that subcommittee. I mean, you could, anybody could be present there. But the alternative for any one of these, again, is the reason, the purpose of the subcommittee is to be able to have a conversation without reaching. Binding decisions, and then bring it back to the full committee. But if at any time you or Jen or anybody else uh proposes that we fully discuss any one of these. We can devote a full meeting to budget and finance, which sometimes we do, or community relations, or something else, and we can all be part of the conversation. This is supposed to be a flexible model that engages us in these key topics as opposed to restrictive. That allows us to only go to one or two subcommittees and only two people shows up. So that's a good question.
Okay. Cause then the, the other thing is, is we might, like if somebody feels like they're, they're still overtaxed even. With what we're doing, we could at any point, I think, just get back together and say, you know, I can't do this subcommittee anymore. At that point, you know, since I, I don't seem to have a whole lot to do, I could, I could definitely jump in.
Well, no, cookies and refreshments.
And that was, oh, oh, not by design, that was because I was kinda surprised with the other vote.
Yeah, I just noticed it too.
And everybody else was raising their hand, so I'm like, whatever. Alright.
And we can create more, I mean, when you look at it, and as you said, the building committee, hopefully we have at least another meeting.
Right.
Coming up to discuss, you know, where we are and all that. But after that, we're pretty close to our.
That's done.
Termination, yeah. And after that, we can create another subcommittee, and I think there were some suggestions when we first discussed new subcommittees.
Yeah, I have an idea, and it's, when we get down to another piece, I, we might, we might wanna talk about that a little bit more. Um. So, just to get back to the next year's meetings. Are we in agreement that we wanna try to hold at least some of these not on a Monday so that we can get to the select board meetings? Cause I think, I think you, you have that open thing here where it's like, well, here's the Monday's date, and here's the, you know, here's the, you know, the other date, right? Or do we wanna go all, you know? One time on the Monday and then the next time on, you know, the other day? I will say that it does not matter to me now, but if I get this locked in, then it's just much easier for me in the future. So I, I will leave it up to the group to kind of help.
So I, I think my question to the committee would be. How important is, is it for us to be able to participate in other committees' meetings? And given that most of the committees seem to be meeting on Mondays, like the select board. Um, it may give us that, that flexibility, that ability. So I, I honestly don't have any problem meeting on Tuesday evenings if we're gonna switch both meetings to Tuesday.
Okay.
I have some conflict with Tuesday. Depends on which ones they are, what kind of other meetings.
I mean, we can do any of the other days too, I guess.
I just also wondered why we, we had to meet on the same night as a select board when, you know, oftentimes it may have been in our best interest to be at the select board meeting.
And for them too. I mean, if we're gonna invite them over to some of these things, but we're talking about liaisons and all that. It doesn't allow them to be able to participate.
Tuesdays gives us a little bit more flexibility to work around dates that you might have, because Mondays, we get tripped up with all of the Monday holidays. Um, so Tuesdays, depending on your dates.
First and third are, are taken by me usually.
Okay, so then these are mostly the first and thirds. So we'd have to.
So do we wanna switch those to the other Mondays? Would that, I mean, the other weeks, would that be an issue too? This, I can afford.
The second and fourth?
Like I say, it does not matter to me right now, because I can just put that out there and then block that time off. And, you know, even the work schedule does not conflict it, as long as I, I know that ahead of time.
So the second and fourth Tuesdays.
You should have.
Shared with me.
Break the standard, right?
Break them all. That's just a contact one. So Jen and Jim, would you?
So Tuesday, the second and fourth, there would be, um, what I'm seeing is one of those is Christmas break. One of those would be, uh, nope, that works.
What a wonderful, wonderful time to meet, you know, so.
I think actually, it's, it's very similar to the Mondays because of, we have a Monday. April that we would meet during April break. This one, we would probably not meet twice in December, which we've done in the past.
So, so I'm thinking, why don't we just put it out there as that, and then if we need to adjust that closer to the time period?
So you're gonna do.
Second and fourth Tuesday?
You're gonna do two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school committee meetings. The first.
The second.
I'm sorry, the second Tuesday.
And fourth.
Will be business.
Yep.
And then the fourth Tuesday would be, uh, a. A business open and then workshop. Okay.
Does that work for you? For you guys?
Yeah.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes. I just, I, I rearranged my schedule. Well, this time of year is my audit year at work, so I just, I'm gonna run.
You're just gonna run. I know the feeling.
Jim, you're good?
Well, there's some dates I'm just out of the, not available anyway, so just, it's not gonna work.
Skype is always available.
As I told you, just a lot going on, and sometimes I just can't make it. So they're not gonna rearrange it for, for me. Others can make it, so.
But second and fourth Tuesday works better than first and?
First and third are taken with my lines meetings, yes.
Okay. Alright, so, um.
We don't need to vote for this, do we?
No, why don't I put a new calendar together, Jim? That'll get you a chance to look it over and confirm we have the right dates, and then we'll put them up.
Okay. And then, I apologize, but do we wanna do the, the next item would be the wellness update?
Let you know when the real conflicts happen.
Which, which is what you're waiting for, right? Yeah. Do, do we wanna start this next?
You guys ready?
Yeah. I'm thinking that by the time you're done with your acronyms, the meeting's gonna be over. Okay.
So legally, is any time of formal presentation documentation in the nursing world, you're supposed to put all of your degrees, your licensings and everything, so that's why. You see all of that. So, um, this is the wellness committee report for this past school year, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. So, um, we're gonna be discussing through the PowerPoint the work that's happened through the district, so this includes food services. Um, the physical health and nutrition education, staff development. And on the current state of the buildings and school health environment. Um, we'll also be talking about how we've been promoting school community, um, school health services, which is basically nursing. Our community partnerships, our s- school staff programs and events, as well as cultural reflective practices that we've been implementing. So for food services, these are some of the items that are being offered through à la carte. Um, can I try listing everything you gave me? Um, so this is, um, things that the kids can buy. In addition to receiving their meal during the day, um, typically at snack, on like ten minute break at the high school. Or for, um, lunchtime. Are they offering these at breakfast too, or no? Okay. Um, so things might be in and out. I notice sometimes when I'm down there, um, you know, they may have certain things out depending on what's available. Do you wanna?
Just one note on that is, everything on that list is approved state.
Through like the stock or A-list?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the meal counts from September of last year till April. Um, I, um, had, put these in a grid to make it easier for you to see. So breakfast at East Meadow, they served over seven thousand meals and lunch, twenty-five thousand meals, which obviously they're much higher now that the school year's over. Um, and it's almost the same at, at the junior, senior high school for the breakfast program and lunch. As well with about two thousand more meals being served at the high school. So, um, as of April, sixty-seven thousand four hundred and ten meals were served in our kitchens this year. So for, to promote physical health and nutrition education, we had a supple, a couple different things happen. We had Joe Morello come in to speak with the students about substance abuse and bullying, which was very well received. Um, by the students and the staff. Um, we had distractology come in, so students who were juniors or seniors were going in. Um, and going through this, um, trying to think of how this.
Simulation.
Yeah, simulation of when you're driving, what are distractions that can pull you away from being able to see what's visibly happening on the road? Um, from what I've heard, that was a great thing. It brought a lot of awareness to. Very simple things such as having your phone in the front of the car with you versus in the back in the trunk. Um, so that was well received. UMass, um. UMass campus came in and some of their students came and worked with our, um, first graders in, uh, Henry Gets Moving, which is based off a book of a hamster. Who, um, is trying to improve his physical activity, nutrition. Um, the Granby Public School nurses, we worked on our two-year goal of technology addiction education. Um, in correspondence to this year, we sent out technology verbs in the Ram report and on our district website to help address certain things that we may not be. Thinking of, such as how the blue light on our technology devices before we go to bed may affect our way of be able to sleep. Um, again, driving a car, having a hands-free headset or not having the phone on at all, so you're not accessing it, accessing it. And then also doing healthcare advocacy, teaching students, um, especially at the high school, to making sure that they are promoting. Their healthcare needs, whether it's to their parents or to their healthcare providers. So that when they get out into the world, especially after graduation, they can address their healthcare needs. Especially since the parents are not available if they're going to live on campus. Um, we also had the Granby Police Department come in and set up a mini, uh, driving course where kids had to drive through obstacles. And really pay attention to what they were doing in the back of the high school. Um, we taught CPR, um, AED classes to anatomy and physiology students in May, which was well received. Um, we had East Meadows Jump Rope for Heart through the American Heart Association. Um, and they also did the mile run and the pulse checker, so they learned to find out which parts of the body they could check their, um, heart rate. And then they worked to build up to be able to run a mile out on the track. And then, as well as the always purity education program. Um, the high school also participated in a wellness education, seventh, eighth grade, ninth and tenth with, um. Electives for eleventh and twelfth graders. Um, we also initiated the life skills education program for seventh and eighth grade, which was new this year. Um, we also received a Chris Heron Project here grant, which also brought substance abuse education to. Grade seven and eight, and it was also being embedded into the ninth and tenth grade education, um, but brought up to their more appropriate levels. Um, for their age. Tapestry also came in and worked with our health educators next door for sexual and health education. Families were informed, um, prior to our, um. Person coming in Clementine that this was going to be taught, so they were aware of that before students participated in the activities. And then we also included, um, mindfulness education, which also included a breathe program, um, that. One of our social workers, um, was doing next door and Kate Forrest here at East Meadow and at the junior, senior high school. Uh, staff professional development, um, several staff attended the Chris Heron Project education in November. Um, Kate Forrest was also around providing a lot of education on her self-care moments. As we're starting to move towards mindfulness education district-wide for next year, she was helping prep, um, a team across. At the junior, senior high school as well as all the staff here at East Meadow. Um, we did the Mind Up PLC where, um, pre-K through grades two were involved in the Mind Up curriculum that we, um, had a pool for. Through the grant funding from the Carlos Vega Grant last year. We also had, um, staff attending supporting students with anxiety through the collaborative. The nurses also attended a, um, emergency response training at Greenfield Community College in August. Um, several staff also attended the school safety summit. Um, as well as legal aspects updates, particularly, particularly for our SRO. Whose role was kind of shifting to, uh, as the state was kind of reforming what their role looked like in the school setting. And then staff were participating in professional development classes through the collaborative as well. And the healthy school environment, we also had a Red Cross blood drive that went very well at the junior, senior high school last month. We had spirit weeks at both schools that was very well received by the kids. A lot of them got very much involved in the different projects that were going on. East Meadow was throwing dance party Fridays in the gym. We had school dances such as the, um, junior seat, the junior, um, high students doing, um. Semi-formals and other things during the year and the cotillion and the palm. We had, um, students and families attend the athletic preseason trainings as required by MIAA. Um, before every season. Um, students are also participated in TAB training, and we're also working on, um. Becoming trainers and training their peers of things to look out for to support each other. We had the Granby to Go Food Drive where we, um, gathered over fifteen hundred pounds of food. In terms of the social emotional health, um, Sped Pack had monthly meetings to help support families. As they are working with their students with special needs. Um, we also had a parents' night with Kate Forrest here at East Meadows to help answer any questions. And bring more awareness to the program that's been occurring here. We had a special Olympics that was held in the back of the Granby Junior Senior High School. It was a very cold day, but it was great to even watch them as I was in the clinic covering and seeing all the great things that they were doing. Um, again, Kate Forrest self-care practices in and outside of the classroom. We had a lot of feedback, um, from students who participated in the program as well as staff. Of the positive impact it was having on them being able to kind of decompress, be able to take a breath and relax. In a moment of stress, as well as get ready to prepare for their day after the hustle and bustle of transitions, whether it was coming in. Off the bus or out of the car to after recess. Um, again, my, the Mind Up PLC also occurred. Um, we were also seeing very similar results. With the younger kids who participated in this program, and it set a strong foundation for the staff who participated into this to transition over to Kate Forrest's program. So, um, they are working with Kate Forrest as well as Jamie Lewinsky in tweaking the curriculum to make sure that it is also meeting the needs of our younger students. Cause historically, it has been taught at the junior, um, junior high and high school level. So they've been, um, doing very well in adapting that to making sure that we're meeting all the needs of the kids regardless of their age and developmental level. Um, the breathe program that, um, our social worker Jess Roy at the high school's been doing with grade seven and eight, which incorporates, um. Yoga movements, deep breathing, more mindfulness activities besides what's being, um, done with Kate Forrest. We had unified basketball, which did a very great job this past year. And Unified Sports Day. Um, I did believe we received a citation from the state. And Unified Sports Day. Um, I did believe we received a citation from the state for our work with that, so that was really great news to see. For school health services, we are continuing to see students with diabetes, asthma. Um, more students with life-threatening allergies, cystic fibrosis. Um, we are seeing a significant um number of an increase in mental health issues, um especially anxiety with students. Um, this is not always. Um, apparent through their um. How they convey it sometimes, sometimes it's psychosomatic, meaning they're coming in saying they have a stomach ache or they have a headache. Or they're not feeling well and that's how their anxiety is presenting instead of saying, you know, I'm really having a hot, a tough day. You know, my dog died last night. They're struggling with that and we're starting to see more of that in the clinics and we're having to adjust how we manage our care to help the students with that. And we also starting to see an increase in students with various physical conditions that need um more nursing care than the average student. We I have also set seen a significant increase in case management, absentee management and medication management. Um, particularly here at East Meadow, as the schools have merged, the number of visits have doubled. Um, and because there's a lot of students requiring medication or have been absent from school, this has increased the um. The amount of collaboration that the school nurses are having to do to help make sure the students' needs are being met. So our return to class rate this year is ninety-five point eight percent, which is still higher than the state average of ninety-four percent. We saw ten thousand seven hundred and ninety-three student visits this year. We gave two thousand eight hundred and two scheduled medications, meaning the students came in every day for their medication. And we administered one thousand two hundred and ten as-needed medications, whether a student had a headache and requested Tylenol or needed a cough drop. Um, we are continuing to provide health education and advocacy inside and outside of the clinic and in the classroom. Um, Mrs. Rainan was going in and teaching our ninth grade class, the health advocacy that I was discussing before. Um, so that by the time they leave Granby Junior Senior High School, they're able to advocate for themselves. She was finding that the previous year when she waited um to do it with the seniors, it was appeared to be too late. So she's she was trying to catch them earlier and teaching them those important skills. So that by the time they leave here, they can help take care of themselves in some capacity. Um, the school nurses are also writing medical five oh fours and individualized healthcare plans. Um, medical five oh fours may also be in collaboration with guidance, depending if the students are having multiple issues going on, whether it's ADHD. And the medical conditions that are impacting their ability to learn. We're also conducting our state mandated screenings as required by Massachusetts state law. And we also have been providing professional development and continuing education to school staff and attending programs ourselves. We have been working with Kate Forrest and the Mind Up Pilot Program as we continue to work on the strategic plan for the district. We again address technology addiction and the impact of health on our students, um um staff and families. Um, we have had a lot of um help with the Granby To Go program. Um, if you're not aware of what this program is, we've been working with neighbors, helping neighbors and providing weekly food bags to students and have also been supporting staff. Um, we have been receiving assistance from different groups such as the United Way, the Western Mass Food Bank. Um, Brenda Wishart has also been assisting us um as well as other community members. Um, which has really helped address this program because we started with thirty kids from. Pre-K through grade six in the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year and we over-doubled that to seventy-one kids this year. And several staff members, so it's continuing to climb and we will be um moving out of our. Small closet at the Granby Junior High School off of the weight room and we will be moving into the computer lab garage for the fall. Um, we are working with neighbors, helping neighbors to to see if we can expand this program out into the community, but we have some logistical things that we need to work on. But the bags will continue to go out and families will give their consent in the beginning of the school year and as identified throughout the school year, so. Um, anyone can uh participate regardless of socio- socioeconomic status. So we're feeling like that is helping break down the barriers that our family need, our families need to access services. School nurses have also been helping with field trip planning, um especially we had one um one day that three field trips went out on one day, so. That was a lot of work to get prepared and we have also been collaborating with schools, uh school staff and outside community providers.
Can I just add one thing to the To Go program?
Mm-hmm.
That the Granby Education Association through um grant through. At the MTA Club Mash Child, we've been able to um purchase twice a year. Cause we get a grant for a thousand dollars to give personal care items to the Granby To Go program.
So that means like shampoo, soap, um you know.
At this time of year, they got sunscreen, you know, enough to help through the summer.
Deodorant, all those important things that sometimes are overlooked when you're feeding a child, but the kids. Are still not being able to clean their, clean themselves and feel up under percent. So we've been very grateful for that. They've been very excited to receive those things. Um, at Christmas time, we packed that and some like hats and mittens and socks into stockings and wrapped them up into Christmas presents and the kids were very excited about that too, so. We're very grateful for that, as well as the Granby PTO also was helping fill um the stockings and help meet the needs too, so. Many hands make light work and we're able to work together to make sure that the kids are taken care of. In our community partnerships, we have been working with the Bridge Resource Center, um their community-based agency to help. Our students who may need um behavioral and mental health assistance outside of school. Um, we have also been working through the Relay for Life, um for Life with the Hope Club at Granby Junior Senior High School, raising funds for their work. Um, again, we had the Red Cross Blood Drive in May, um that was went very well. Um, and then the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Granby To Go program that we just discussed. We again worked with the Special Olympics and our students not only attended the event that was at the back of the um high school, I think it was in October, they've also been traveling to other schools. They were in Northampton recently and then in South Hadley, I think as well. Um, so not only are they here supporting our school, they're outside in the community doing that as well. Um, again, we discussed Henry Gets Moving earlier in the TAB training. Um, we have also been working with VHN's partial program for some of our students who may need um more assistance, um they're not. If they're not eligible to be fully admitted into the hospital to get their mental health needs addressed, so they will attend a day program through partial. Um, to get the supports they need to be able to return to the school setting and home setting safely. And then um the Help Yourself Orchard Program are the trees that and uh bushes that just got planted in the back of the building for us to. Um, grow our own fruit and help support our community through that um produce. Um, we've also as part of the um the partial program, there's also. Skip where students, if they're not able to attend partial, can also be recommended for the school intervention program through Bay State. River Valley Counseling has also been coming in and providing counseling services for our students who may need. More than um what guidance is able to provide in the school setting. Um, Tapestry, as discussed before, has been coming in and working with us. Um, Community Support Options, they um also came in and did a professional development training. Um, in August for our staff at the Film Resilience to help dr- um address trauma in the classroom. And then working with the collaborative out of Northampton for professional development. So Staff Resources Program and Services, we do have staff who are accept um accessing the Granby To Go program. Um, we have been providing also EpiPen and Med Delegation Training so that if for some reason a nurse is not able to attend a field trip. Or they may be doing um after-school programs, they're trained to give EpiPens and be delegated medication if needed by um as deemed necessary by the school nurse. Um, staff participated in yoga classes here at East Meadow and at the junior senior high school, which was very well received. Um, they've also been participating in Kate Forrest's self-care practices. Um, I think many of the staff are learning that we can help take care of the kids, but if you're not able to help take care of yourself, then. You're not able to do as good of a job um taking care of the kids as well. It's kind of the airplane scenario, you need to put your mask on first before you put on someone else's. Um, East Meadows had a social committee where they have been doing potlucks for breakfast and for lunch throughout the school year. Um, they've been participating in CPR and first aid training. Um, because of scheduling issues, we did um start besides doing the onsite programs, the staff will take the classroom portion online. And then I will go over the skills sections with them to help um navigate the complex schedules that they have. Um, staff also have access to the Employee Assistance Program. Um, we've also had teacher um appreciation celebrations is through the Granby PTO um in the first full week of March, I think it was. To celebrate all of their hard work. And then finally, our cultural opportunities that we've come have been providing. Um, staff have had access to compute um continuing ed for culture diversity in E L E S L. Um, continuing ed, um they've also had access to social justice trainings. Jamie Lewinsky has set up an ELL Google Classroom, which um provides continuing ed as well as important articles and other things that she's finding. Um, are important for people to be aware of when they're teaching in the classroom and for their own personal information. Um, the Granby Junior Senior High School has also been having monthly advisories. Um, one thing that they did recently that had a very um positive. Um, response was they had all the students line up on one side of the room and they were asking the kids questions of. Have you, did you, do you, have you had a parent who maybe has passed away? Or has they gone through some type of experience, so the students would, without saying anything, walk across the room, stand for a minute and then come back. And they would keep going through that with the different questions and afterwards they had discussions of. Were they aware that their peers were going through these different experiences and do they have a different outlook? Of um how they could be responding to their peers and just. Being aware of the different things that people may be experiencing that you don't know behind closed doors. So um these, they have been very impactful in helping bring awareness not only to the teachers. Um, but the students as well when working with each other. Um, they've also been initiating peace builders here at East Meadow as well as through the monthly advisories at the high school and then the Mind Up program, programming. So if you have any questions after this um presentation, after you leave here, please contact me. Um, I know this was a lot of information, but per our policy, I had to inform you of everything that's going on here. Um, one area that I was not able to address was the current condition of the school buildings. I did reach out to John. Um, but he's been tied up with other responsibilities, um so that's currently a work in progress. You have any questions?
I I have a few.
Okay.
Um.
Thought you were out of questions for the.
You had your time.
You know, again, a lot of free time. Um, so you mentioned on a couple of occasions, you know, the puberty.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Even call it sex education, but sex and something. So I'm assuming that we are giving some understanding. Uh, of changes that students are going through and you know, some introduction at least to some sex education. Does any of that include any aspect of how they have to respect each other? Um.
In terms of relationships?
As genders, uh different genders, uh peers who are, as they grow, get involved in different type of relationships. Um, do we have a program that is not just one touch, but something that is consistent because. Obviously, that is a, that is an issue across the country, across the globe probably. But I don't know that we are always doing a great job, and I'm not talking about Granby. Uh, as as um as adults, we can put a little more weight on that. In terms of educating our children about respecting others.
Mm-hmm.
And typically this shows. You know, in stories that we hear in terms of, you know, uh. Male counterparts not being respectful for their female counterparts. But it can show itself in uh any different way. I'm wondering if we do have anything that goes deep enough to inform our children at a younger age so that by the time we let them go into. You know, broader experiences, they do know what that means. They do know how to protect themselves, they do know how to be aware of their surroundings. But also they do know that they have to respect everybody else uh around them.
I know at the junior high level and the high school level, they have been talking about relationships and about. What that looks like and what healthy relationships look like versus unhealthy relationships and advocating for yourself. At the East Meadow level, I'm not quite sure what that is looking like and that is something I can look into more. Um, I know that um the schedule for this upcoming year has more um time put aside for health education from grades four through six. And I know the curriculum is supposed to be addressing that. Um, if you feel that needs to be going younger, then we also need to making sure that that's getting um taught in some capacity as well here. Um, we did have um the YWCA come in in the past and speak with their juniors and seniors about domestic violence and I did reach out to them this year. But no one got back to me because they were changing who is responsible for going out to the community and funding was also an issue of getting them to go out um. To any school. Um, so that is something that I can keep plugging away. Um, but I do think it's an important conversation to have, especially as the world is changing and what different things look like. For each person and being respectful and aware of that, so I can look into that for the future.
Um, the the other interesting thing that you mentioned is technology addiction.
Mm-hmm.
Interestingly, there was a, there was something on NPR this morning about technology addiction. And I, I think I heard that the American Psychology Association or whatever the equivalent of that is. They don't yet recognize technology addiction officially. How do we approach it in the absence of official recognition of technology addiction as? As something similar to traditional typical addictions?
I think the US is kind of slower in responding. We know that European countries and like China, they are diagnosing it, they are treating it. They actually have addiction camps and centers that people are going to to treat this. Um, things tend to come over into the United States a little bit slower in terms of responding to certain things, so. I think we just need to treat it as any type of addiction. As you would with gambling or drinking or other things as well, because if it's impacting their ability to function in their daily life. Then there is a problem and it has to be addressed, whether that's, you know, a team approach, whether what we're doing here to provide education. With guidance and nursing and teaching staff, with the family, with any healthcare providers outside. To making sure that our students are making, are being taken care of and whatever that looks like. And it may be developing a plan and to ensure that we're making sure their needs are getting met while addressing the underlying issue.
And I'm completely with you on all that. I'm just trying to understand in the absence of some standards, as you said, that uh that. That do not exist currently uh in the United States, are we getting help from individual institutions? That are working on this topic or where are we?
Schools.
In our schools, who who's providing that type of assistance?
We did have screenager, screenagers come in, which were shown from grade six through grade twelve about technology addiction. Um, they were shown to students and we had a family night that was here. We did that collaboratively in two thousand seventeen eighteen with Hadley Schools. Um, because we both funded it together and they also showed their students. Um, we did, um, we tried providing more education through our blurbs this year um to address that. But until the American Psychology Association puts it into the DSM-Five and addresses it as an issue. There's always gonna be a gray area because there's no specific standards to establish. I think it's coming.
Yeah.
Um.
It does, that's how it sounded, yeah.
But again, I think it's a little slower moving than other places, so. Thank you for that reminder, Robin.
No problem. From here forward.
Just a quick clarification, you mentioned near the end here, four, five, six health curriculum, health education, who? Who instructs that? Who provides that health curriculum?
The PE teacher, PE health teacher here, Shonda Covert.
Okay, that's, that's the best way because then you know every kid's getting the same thing.
Yeah, and um I did have a discussion before the school year ended about ensuring that also Karen Slowzak, our nurse here at East Meadow. Yeah, and um I did have a discussion before the school year ended about ensuring that also Karen Slowzak are nurse here at East Meadow. Um, is given the opportunity to also co-teach with lessons that may need assistance or just a different view. Um, so I will ensure that the clinic's covered by myself or a sub or whatever that looks like to making sure that we're meeting those needs.
We had this conversation a few times before, so I'll just uh wrap it up with that. What did we find out about the caffeine ban that we started at the beginning of this year? Did we have conversations?
We had offered it and folks did not come. We, after like the initial um. Concerns in the fall, we had not heard any response from any students or families after that. You're welcome. Is there any other further questions? Thank you.
All right, um, I guess since we still have uh food service. So he's not sitting around.
Yeah, that's fine. Sure.
If you guys don't mind, we'll jump right into that.
Look, you might just take it off a meeting, huh? Look at that, huh?
Taking out of order.
Love it.
You guys don't mind if I sit, do you? I'm more comfortable.
Love it. That gift's not for you, though.
Pass out some handouts. I'm not gonna be as uh fancy as uh Nancy is, so.
So I guess I have some specific thing that I wanted to ask.
Yeah, but I'll take one.
Before we get started, um, you know, I've been to a few meetings and I know it's, it's all about the financials. I know it's important. But I just wanna talk a little bit about what we do during the course of the year. Um, you know, this year is like.
Do you have an extra?
Um, you know, the ladies and the gentlemen there, they work hard every day. It's, you know, we've kind of forgotten department in the school systems. Um, but things that we've done this year, um, I think we had a successful merge with the two kitchens into one. You know, we had West Street, we had East Meadow last year. We combined them into one this past year and it was a, it was a pretty seamless transition. Um, I think things went well. Um, you know, we cut a little bit labor, which I think helped the bottom line. Um, both schools, we increased the breakfast menu options when I came aboard last year. Uh, they had to rotate in weekly cycle and just basically rotate every, same every week. Like Monday was the same. They knew what they were having the same week. Um, this year we, we, we did a two-week cycle and then halfway during the year we uh, we changed it up. And I think that reflected on our breakfast counts. I think our counts, I think, we, we almost did twenty-five hundred more breakfast this year. Um, in East Meadow, we uh gave them more options for lunches. We had three options. This year we went to four. Uh, we introduced the entree salad to the menus daily and uh, there was probably ten, twelve kids every day. They would have the entree salad at East Meadow. They were really looking forward to it. Uh, we offered lunches for field trips this past year, um, which was a pretty good success. You know, whenever we had field trips, we probably have ten, twelve kids offer that would have lunches. Um, the biggest thing I think we did was we offered lunches on half-days. Um, for some reason the past, they just weren't offering lunches on half-days. In East Meadow, we probably did thirty, forty lunches a day from half-days, which was a, I think a real. Big thing. Uh, Lucky Tray Day in uh, East, East Meadow, we did Lucky Tray Day monthly. Um, the kids looked forward to it. It was just a little treat. We give them, they have stickers on their trays. They turn it over. They get a lucky, they get a little prize. So they looked forward to that every month. Uh, we also expanded our ala carte, ala carte options a little bit. Um, we had some new beverages, um, you know, healthy beverages, of course. Um, as far as East Meadow goes, we did a lot of the, the holiday turkey luncheon for the students and families. It was a big hit. As far, and also the barbecues on field days for the, uh, for students and families were uh, were uh, big days. Um, in the high schools, uh, for breakfast, we offered smoothies and parfaits uh for breakfast daily, which go, which went over well. Um, same in the high school, we offered field trip lunches this year. Didn't go over as well as the East Meadow school. Um, but we did offer them. Then they, uh, they knew that they were available. Um, we ran some ethnic lunches. You know, we did Puerto Rican days, we did, you know, Mexicans, we did Italians. Um, the biggest thing I think we did this year is bars on Friday. The kids knew on Fridays they were getting tater top bars. They're getting mac and cheese bars. They're always looking forward to Fridays. They knew it was a bar, specialty bar, uh, day on Fridays. And uh, also during the course of the year, we served uh fifteen, fifteen hundred pounds of locally grown produce for uh, for the district. So that was uh, pretty impressive. So those are just the little things that we've done this year and uh, just to give you a little snapshot of what we've done. The course of the year. Any questions on any of that or?
I really have a question. I wanna wait and see.
The, the one thing that I found interesting is that meals per day for lunches seems to have gone down even though the uh. Um, enrollment is up. Do you know what's driving that?
It's, it's ala carte, because ala carte has gone down. More kids are eating lunches and get buying less snacks. And ala carte, for every three dollars and five cents ala carte sales equals one lunch. And we've done less ala carte this year. The kids are eating more, if, if, if I had the P and L, they're eating more type A meals. Which is good because they're eating lunch and they're buying less snacks. So that's what's driven that, that down.
So one kid might have bought six dollars worth of stuff and been counted as two lunches.
Yeah, where now they're buying the meals and less ala carte. So that's why our lunch, lunches are down a little bit. And then also the days of operation, very deceiving because this past year we had a lot of two-hour delays. We had a couple, we had a, uh, early dismissal, so that really affected our lunch counts as well. Where last year, I think we just had a lot of days off, snow days. So that, that kind of affected our whole um lunch counts. Um, but overall, this is synopsis of uh, you know, the beginning of the year to May. Um, you know, I think it tells a pretty good story. Last year we were, at this time we were talking, we were twenty-three thousand dollars in the red. This year, we're plus, I mean, it's five hundred dollars, but we're in the, we're in the black.
Last year, I remember you were presenting from, from that.
So I, I, it's a good story. I mean, there's a lot of work to do still on the food service, but I think we've, I think we've had a good year.
Um, you know, working with Adam, I think the communication has really, really helped.
Um, you know, I've got a year under my belt, you know, I feel confident that next year, you know, we can even have a better year as far as.
So historically, how much, how much does June change that bottom?
It's hard to, it's, it's, it's hard to tell. I'm hoping we have a good, because we didn't purchase a lot of product. We tried to use up in June's of two weeks, we, we had two weeks. We tried to use a lot of our commodities that we had left over from the government. We try really kind of limit our purchases, so I'm hoping. June, I think last year if I look at June, I think we had, we had a good, so I'm hoping we're gonna stay in the black.
The high school had a lot of half-days to last week.
Yeah, that, that affects a little bit, but our labor was, also showed it because they didn't work, so it kind of balances that, so. Um, it definitely hurt. I mean, I, I won't know until the end of the month, to be honest, but um, East Meadow was strong right up until the end. So I'm thinking that'll, that'll help.
Um, we also put out, I'll say we can put out a survey this year to kind of gauge. It was a little late in the year. I think next year we're gonna plan on maybe doing.
Yeah, I'll do part two, yeah. Part one in November and one in.
But it did give us some good information. Um, Ken put together a corrective action plan on how we can kind of. Um, target some of the concerns in the survey. Um, but I don't think that had been done recently.
Like I said, I've only been here a year and a few months, so I'm not sure if it's been done.
Yeah, it was good to get.
It's a great dad, obviously, a great dad. I mean, one of the ones that really surprised me was. They just don't wanna wait in line a little bit, so we've talked to Mr. Sullivan about maybe getting a third lunch in for the, because, you know, two lunches with. Hundred kids at a time and I don't know if you know the high school, the lines are very small, very congested. There's not a lot of, a lot of room. So it kind of bogs them down a little bit, so.
So the, the survey results are gonna be geared a little more towards the high school because obviously they gave the more feedback. Did we even run it at the, here or no?
No, we talked about.
Yeah, we talked about it, right. So we only ran it at the high school, which we figured it was better that way. Because I think we'd get more informed data, obviously, from the older kids. Um, but we did get some good.
Oh, we had a great turnout. I mean, we had about ninety, ninety uh.
Yeah, and I think, what'd you guys give away?
Couple of gift cards.
Yeah, so again, we only did one this year. We kind of were late in the game. Uh, by the time we both got comfortable with what we were doing in our kind of schedule. Um, but next year we'll certainly maybe one the beginning of the year, maybe one around the holidays and then maybe one like.
We also talked about maybe getting some kind of food committee together. You know, talking to them face to face, I think helps too a little bit.
Mike is looking for committees, so you may want to.
So the half-day lunches, um. So did those work?
It definitely worked at East Meadow. Like I said, East Meadow during half-days, we just weren't serving any meals and we were, you know, we were up to like forty, fifty at some half-day, so.
Yeah, I think, I think I was just.
And the labor, I mean, we had one person there, so I mean, it was, you know, for half, for three hours, so I think it worked as far as.
Okay, because that's, that's, that's a piece I wanted to make sure that it worked as far as making, like you didn't lose money out of it.
Yeah, and, and to be honest, I think state law, we, we really need to serve the kids. I mean, if they're free pay, freeers, we need to serve them even in half-days. I was, I was shocked that we didn't serve them lunches on half-days.
They just take those home for them?
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Well, they, they go back to their class before they go on the bus. They eat them in their classrooms, yeah.
And what does the high school do? Same thing?
Uh, high schools grab and go. They grab, they go into the line, they grab, they sit down, then they go, so.
Now, you're gonna look at what you were offering this year and see if you're gonna make any uh adjustments to what you might offer next year?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, the survey was great too and the kids gave us a lot of good feedback. Um, so the last two weeks of school, actually, we put up a signs and said. You guys dictate what you want, so we kind of build the menus on what they wanted to see, so.
Something that was kind of, I don't wanna say overlooked, but the chef that had been here for a while, that had a really good relationship with. The kids here, um, left and took another job. So there was kind of some, you know, unknowing, yeah. You know, is this whoever's gonna replace him, are they gonna be up to and?
She did a great job this year. She was great with the kids on the line.
A seamless transition as to, you know, what she was providing the kids and the kids really took a liking to that. So that really, I think that's something that we should, we should certainly emphasize that, that we, she kind of hit the ground running and, and we didn't really see any.
Yeah, we really didn't.
Lack of service or, you know.
And the biggest thing in the survey, I mean, every, I think it was like seventy-one percent, everybody said the staff there is phenomenal. But I mean, you go there, they, they know the kids' names. It's, it's just, it's, it's nice, you know, you really are. I think it makes the kids feel comfortable and it's a, it's a nice environment. I think they really appreciate the, the staff there.
It's also tough that the USDA kind of, I mean, dictates a lot of what we can serve in the school, so I mean.
Yeah, to keep the, to keep the budgets in line, I mean, you gotta take what they take.
Right, some of the survey answers from the kids were like, you know, they want steak and ribs, but obviously we can't, we can't provide that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the government gives you tons of chicken, 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 so you gotta be creative with the chicken. I think, I think we did a good job this year, you know, trying to be creative and.
So what happened between the last time you were here when we were looking at a big, big red number to, to now?
And I guess the next. Last year?
No, the last time you were in here, just a few months ago.
Yeah, so last time you were here.
I think it was like, I think it was nineteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, there was some discrepancy based on, yes, it was around a, a number around two thousand, maybe twenty-six hundred if I remember correctly. Yeah, I mean.
It's, it's, it's a combination thing. I mean, the counts have been up, uh, I mean, labor, I mean, not gonna lie, labor's been a huge part of this turnaround.
So, so the other part of that was, if we know what it is that shifted, is there a way we can make that happen sooner in the year? Um, because I think historically, we look at this number, it looks okay, then.
It's kind of the trend, I mean.
Then it gets good at the end. It's like, how do?
I haven't been doing it long, but I know Septembers are always tough months. You're always kind of fighting it through the year. September's just, you know, you're starting the year, everybody's payroll comes out, you gotta order. You know, we have no commodity foods, you're ordering everything from scratch, I'm full-blown, so. September is usually a test, the month you really gotta focus on. I think we did a good job. Because I think last year, two years ago in September, I think it was like eighteen thousand dollar deficit in September. Well, last year I think it was three thousand. So I think that's where we really contained it, September. And then the, the other months, you can really gain traction and kind of get that.
We're heading, we're heading in the right direction, certainly. I mean, I don't think it could have gotten much worse from the past. Um, but we are certainly, the biggest thing was the communication. Um, the biggest thing was half-day lunches, some field trip lunches. Um, so we're, we're certainly doing the right thing. There's obviously some room for improvement.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But we're certainly trending in the right direction, so um. It's been, it's been good. Uh, you know, I think it's, it's been.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate Adams. I mean, you know, the knowledge and just help and it's been a, it's been a good teamwork and I think it's helped and it showed in the, you know, on the bottom line, so.
So one other thing that we can discuss over the summer is a rate increase on lunches at the high school. And at the, um, here at the elementary school. So the federal government says there is a median price that we have to kind of abide by. And it's two ninety-two, two dollars and ninety-two cents. Currently, we are at two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Um, so in order for us to come up to that two ninety-two, we were talking about. At the high school, maybe raising the price about fifteen, ten to fifteen cents per meal. And everyone says, oh, raise the prices, raise the prices. It's, it's not, it's not an astronomical amount. Um, but right now, the federal government holds us to a standard that we're not, you know, we're not um, providing, so. And at the middle, at the elementary school, it might not even, we might not even have to increase prices. It's kind of gonna be a trial basis, but Ken and I are gonna work. Um, I'm gonna do a lot of the work over the summer only because he's not here. Um, and it's something that obviously the committee can, can discuss if, again, I understand people are gonna hear pricing increases and all that and they're gonna go crazy. Um, but we do have to get to a certain amount and we're not there yet, so.
I think we, I think we talked about that last year or the year before and I think it was, I think it was your team that came in and said that we were okay where we were at, but did something else change?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so the last time, based on the information that I have and it's limited from years past, I wanna say it was. Three years ago, there was a vote.
Yeah, three, four years was last time they, I think they evolved the prices.
Yeah, okay, so yeah. And it's, it, even, that's a good point. So even if we weren't, even if we didn't need to get up to this federal. Um, guideline of a median price, I think it would be, it'd be, you know, responsible for us to talk about an increase anyway in, in school lunch. Because labor's going up, food costs are going up, everything's going up and, you know, we can't obviously continue to charge the same price, so. That's something.
I think if we sneak a ten, fifteen, uh, you know, I, I don't think it'll hurt too much, I mean, but I mean, you know, twenty-five, fifty, obviously. But I think ten, fifteen, I don't think people will really.
All right, is there anything up there?
No, I just wanna, I, I'm, I'm very happy that this year we're having this conversation unlike the last several years. And I really give you a lot of credit for that. I give Adam, you, a lot of credit in your collaboration and much appreciated. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ken.
Coming to hear more often.
That was easy, right? Yeah, that was easy.
Thank you so much.
Well, with the right numbers, we were always. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, so, um. We already talked about the workshop model a little bit, uh, super. I didn't see the evaluation. I, I asked that, that get put on because I, I think we're up against a timeline, right? Is it the end of this month or, like, when, when does this have to get done?
What do you mean?
Early evaluation.
I don't know that there is a specific timeline. I've been checking uh different schools and they've been really doing it at different times. In each calendar year, there has to be one evaluation, that's my understanding. Last year, we did it in June, I mean, in January or February. Uh, so that means we're actually delayed by a few months. Uh, yet, this, this year, we definitely have to have uh an evaluation. And as I had a quick conversation with Cheryl, we're probably delayed a little bit, uh, unnecessarily. And, you know, I'll, I'll take the onus uh, uh, for that as well because we were. We were trying to refine it into some goals that were measurable enough. And the conversations that we had probably tried to make it a little too granular, as opposed to leaving it the level that it was, and we could have had this conversation a couple of months ago. So based on that, what I suggested, uh, Cheryl was that. What she had already shared with us, which was also, uh, reviewed and discussed at. One or two, uh, school committee meetings in the last couple of months. Uh, to add, is is there any way for me to, or for you to show what, uh, that that spreadsheet?
Uh, it's in there, oh, the spreadsheet?
Yeah. Or I can, I can put it.
You can put it in the folder.
I can drop it in the folder. So the suggestion was. We're just dropping it, right, from the folder, like, uh, SharePoint? So I suggested to Cheryl that we add. We add two columns, she already has the goals, she already has the actions, and she already has a high level measurement. Uh, I proposed adding two columns, one will be what was the expected outcome from each one of those actions? And the last one is what is a more, um. Tangible measurement that came out of the actions that she took, so that the committee can. Can see, you know, what what resulted from those actions. Uh, I am going to drop it right here, hopefully we'll do it now. Yeah, so it is the spreadsheet that says superintendent evaluation template in the folder for this meeting. And it's a very simple, uh, template, I'm just gonna build it on that, but for each goal, there will be an action, expected outcome, measurement. And a timeline, uh, associated with that, or a due date. If it was something that we expected to go over a couple of years, because it aligns with, uh, our strategic plan, it can be. Uh, it can be shown right there, or if it was due by a certain date, we can, Cheryl can put the due date, uh, also. If any of you open that file, what you are seeing on top of that page, categories, and there are some, uh. Terms, district improvement is the largest category in terms of the emphasis on superintendent evaluation. And there has to be at least two, um, two goals in there. Uh, for student learning, there has to be at least one goal, and for professional practice, there has to be one, I think Cheryl has more than that for each one of those categories. So what she's gonna do, she's gonna put each one of those goals into their respective categories. And then use the template that you are looking at to be able to align them with the actions and expected outcomes and measurements and timelines. Um, if we. If we receive that from you by our next meeting. By that same next meeting, I will share with the, uh, school committee. A spreadsheet that will have checkboxes, uh, that will align with the rubric that the, uh, DESI gave to us. Hopefully, it will be a little less frustrating than the rubric that they gave to us, it will be a little more, uh, clear. So the, hopefully, the only thing that the school committee members will have to do, really go to each one of those, uh, checkboxes. And check whether or not they have seen whatever that rubric is saying. And based on that, we can quickly, uh, sum it up and finalize our evaluation. The question that I have is this. In the past, uh, several years, I have done the summary version, and there has to be a summary version, just we. You know, typically, the chair receives it from all the members and then creates a summary version, would you be okay doing that?
Yeah, I don't mind doing that.
Okay, cool, then we're all set, I think the process, um, with those two documents coming together should be pretty straightforward.
Okay, yeah, the the reason I wanted to kind of get this closed out is cause I wanna start to look at. The goals for next year, cause we wanted to try to get ahead of that, right? Start to talk about the goals now and then give you time to get through them, right?
Yep, so absolutely agree with that, if you don't mind me just adding, uh, one more thing then. I agree with that, and I was going to also propose to the school committee next time, a timeline. For superintendent evaluation, something that I took from a couple of other school districts. That starts in September, but also requires our school committee to complete the evaluation before the elections in. In May. So that we don't find ourselves in the situation where we have three members who were here over the course of the year. And, you know, the other two, uh, you know, retired. So if we can follow that timeline, it allows us to be able to review certain aspects of it. And it seems like it shouldn't take more than five, ten minutes maybe for many of the things that are, uh, monthly, uh, activities related to the evaluation. But as we get close to, uh, to the end of the school year, the activities get a little more involved and we start doing what we're gonna be doing now. And then we complete it, we do the evaluation before any of the, uh, committee members leave, for instance, you you're here with us for one year. You would have the opportunity to, uh, give a full evaluation before you leave.
Cause I don't know, I would find it hard to do it now, you know, no, no fairness, not just that fair, I don't have enough to go on, you know?
Yep.
Nothing to disagree with, but I mean, in terms of completing it, it might be difficult, and I don't know how you how you would feel too.
Well, I don't know, it's a strategic thing.
You might be, okay, a little bit more, I've I've been out there.
Scan, if travel.
No, this is, this is actually, you know, I'm I'm doing similar things at work. And I find this particularly painful, because it's really not easy to follow or really easy to deliver. Uh, but I think we're getting pretty close, and if it's any consolation, again, because I've been looking at other districts. To see whether or not they have, uh, learned any lessons that we could leverage. It looks like everybody was very, very frustrated by this process. Uh, up until, you know, two thousand eighteen cycle, uh, from which I was able to find some, uh, some documentation. But everybody seems to have learned some things and it's coming together. Uh, if we can make this one of those documents that we share with the incoming, uh, committee members. And prepare them for it, so there's some, uh, something that they can read, uh, that would probably be very helpful. And in the future, you can introduce it to those new members.
Yeah, and I think also, um, to have that plan, like we did last year with, uh. Well, with Adam, um, the budget subcommittee. That that kept us right in line to where, I hate to say it, it was not as hard as it used to be, right? And when we were asked things, we were like almost ready for what we were being asked, right? So maybe that's the key, if we have to figure out dates and timelines, it's just stay true to those, right? Okay. I did see, I did see that Adam dropped the thing in the.
Yeah, I just, I was gonna wait till, um.
So we can, we can either do the community relations subcommittee, and the only thing I really wanted to talk about that. Um, I feel like last year, we formed that committee and we didn't really give it enough of a plan. Or we gave it too big of a plan, something like that, and it didn't really get anywhere, so what I wanted to do is kind of keep this on on here. To where we can kind of, as a group, define what we want to happen, and then have that committee, and maybe. Maybe it gets broken up into a second piece, because one piece is just way, way too large. Uh, but I, but I thought we'd keep it, you know, on here until we have a defined path that we want, that that committee to go down.
And what pieces do you have in mind when you say a couple of pieces?
Well, there there's always been like the the short term versus long term, the.
I see.
The, do we go and do the the small incremental things, or do we take our time and try for something big? It's like, well, how do we do both at the same time? Does it mean we need two committees, or do we, do we just say, you know, we're not gonna worry about the larger piece? We're only gonna worry about the smaller piece, there, there's just a few things I think that we can, we can define a little bit better.
Yeah.
And then, and then ask the committee to kind of take those forward, right?
Yep. My my very quick thought on that, it stays with the same committee, but I, I. I hear you, and I think there is merit in seeing some of the lower hanging fruit type. Uh, opportunities, and then focus on those, and whatever is very large, we can involve other folks in in the effort. Or we can break it into multiple pieces and see them as projects, maybe, and everybody can go, that's that's a very good idea.
So, I think if we don't mind, I think we'll probably keep this here, at least for a few meetings, just so we can start to. Talk about it a little bit more, and get more of an idea of where we want to go, um, I think we'll probably have to meet. Or that subcommittee will probably have to meet one, once or twice to look over what the last group did, and then come back to us with some more recommendations, I think, right?
What is the, I guess, real quick, brief overview, but what is the point of the, might sound like a dumb question. What's the point of the community relations subcommittee?
Community relation?
Yes, I, I understand. I I understand.
I'm good at that talk.
Yes.
So it's.
So I think, I think last year, we had a few different ideas in mind, and I think depending on who you spoke to, you 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 got slightly different opinions of what it was supposed to do. But I think in general, it was supposed to be improve the outreach to the community as a whole, so that the people who didn't have any. Fo- fo- folks in the school districts still knew what was going on and still felt a part of the school community. I think, high level, it's kind of what we.
I've been here for these meetings, it's basically to keep the community informed of the good things that are happening in the schools. And what the, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be about the instruction, it's, you know, um, kindergarten run on a field trip. It's, it's just letting the community know what is happening. Because let's face it, this is a small town, they talk among themselves, well, I didn't know they did that, how come we didn't get invited? And when did they do that? There was an open house? Sure, there were three of them, that's, and you know, yeah, they were publicized, but. People still in town have said, well, when are we gonna get to go in and see that new building?
Now, not just that, there's the band shows that they put on, uh, the drama club that's on their shows, it's, is it just, like. How do we make sure that everybody has a shot to know and to come to them, right?
So, so I'm glad that you asked the question then, because I had a slightly different idea. That this possibly would cover three or four different categories. One would be the communication aspect of it, which is what we're talking about, the other one would be community involvement, how do we, how do we engage our community members in certain things that we do? Uh, it would be, it would go beyond that communication, really, uh, having them here, or finding some other opportunities to, uh, work with them. And getting them, getting, getting everybody excited, uh, for being part of activities at the schools, or, uh. Activities that involve the school community and our community at large. The third piece that I was thinking was related to our relationship with the town, uh, government. All the other committees, how we're engaging with them, I I think it's a great first step that we change the cadence of our meetings. So that we can now go to, uh, some other meetings and then.
To inter, I am an interrupter, but not only that, having the, um, person from the finance committee stand up. At town meeting and say that you have had joint meetings and how well they worked.
Yeah.
That he promoted the schools right there, it's that kind of thing that needs to get out there.
Right.
And I think this is why we need to define it better, because there's like multiple layers, and it can be this big, or it can be this big, depending on what we ask them to do, right?
Well, simply, like I said last time, you just need to get information out there, just start somewhere, get something out there, I mean, you could. There's a senior newsletter that goes out to people, talk to the, to the senior director, put something in there that goes out on her email blast. Also, on a newsletter that you pick up at the bank and so on, put it out there, you know?
If you'd like the periodic phone calls, that went out to all the residents.
Yeah, that was, um, a result of the committee, to make sure that we use the town all call for the town meetings and the budget meetings.
Yeah, it's already paid for, it doesn't cost anything to use it, it's already paid for, yeah. Except people always afraid of overusing it, you know?
Yeah.
To get into overusing it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did see that COA thing, it's like in a lot of different places, and it looks like there's some space in there that that we could use too, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of different things.
Yeah, and and, a- absolutely, and that's what I'm talking about, that that's the first step to. Start that communication, but also, I know that there are a lot of folks who are members of the, uh, uh. Of the senior center, who have a lot of things that they can share with the schools as well. You know, they can come and talk about different things with our students, some of them are retired, uh, professionals. Uh, some of them can speak to their experience in town, some of them can speak to some of the extracurricular activities that they're involved in. There is actually some wealth of, uh, uh, activity and experience that resides there too, that we. Are, we did not know how to engage yet, so this may be a good opportunity for us to look into.
Yeah, and because it's such a big thing, I think you just start small, it's almost like what, um, the wellness show, it's like she listed everything that you did. So you start by saying, hey, we send out news about this, we let the committee know about this, you just start doing that, and pretty soon. Not that you have to cover everything, cause you can't cover everything, but what are, what are the important things you start with?
Yeah.
And try to cut, cut, you know, cover it across the spectrum, so I got somebody elementary, I got somebody graduate through high school.
Agreed.
Alright, um, I guess we're on the standing reports, oh, I'm sure you had something.
I was wondering if we should take a little break?
Or we can go into my standing report, which has a little.
Okay, so, okay, I did not know how we're gonna do it, okay.
Well, Adam has his stuff.
Mine's gonna be.
No, I had, I had alternative motives, but that's.
Okay.
Mine's gonna be quick, but.
Mine first?
Yeah, well, of course, you're the, you're the boss.
Okay, so in your folder is the superintendent update. Yes, there it is, okay. So, uh, a huge shout out to Mrs. Grooby's class for their growing of the radishes. Which we used at the teacher's celebration luncheon, Mrs. Hepworth was so very excited to receive these wonderful treats. And I had the distinct pleasure of chopping them and putting them on the teacher salads, uh, they were absolutely delicious. Um, and there were some pictures there, um, the joy on those kids' faces is just amazing. So I do hope that we can grow, pardon the pun, that program. Um, especially with our trees and the orchard idea, I just think it, it really gets at the heart of what kids like to do. They like to see things grow and, um.
I did, I did look at the, the plants growing on the way in, and it's starting to look really nice out there.
Alrighty?
Yeah.
The tomato plants have tomatoes, we have more radishes, the peas are starting to flower. It just is, the kids took delight, when you've got kids that are in third grade, wanna go out with you. Took two weeks for one boy, but he earned the privilege of planting scallions. And they're growing out there, and he had to go out and water them, that was, he earned that. And a couple of other kids, just to go out there and pull a few weeds or, um, water with a watering can. And one little girl who was in the SOAR program was showing the kids in SOAR. And as she was showing them, because I took them out there and showed the kindergarten what were weeds. She was leaning over and reading while she was telling kids what were any. So there is so much potential in that courtyard, and the teachers now are more excited and on board. And I think now, more than one class will get involved in planting next year.
Cool, that's awesome, that's awesome.
Um, congratulations to our seniors on their graduation, it was a lovely day, and what an amazing group of students. They will certainly be missed. Uh, congratulations to girls lacrosse, girls softball, and boys baseball teams that made it into the Western Mass playoffs. Um, they, all three teams had an extremely successful season, um, and it was one cold day at UMass for baseball. And then finally, um, we do celebrate, uh, some retirements this year, uh, we have four staff members this year. We have Christina Brownell and Karen Rainan from Granby Junior Senior High School, and we have Mary Stone from East Meadow. And then last but not least, she would rather not be noticed, but, um, my certainly right hand person. The school committee's right hand person, who has twenty-five years of service to the Granby?
Plus, almost eight years as a sobbing, yes.
Right, um, to the Granby Public Schools, so, um, this is. So, um, this is Kathy Herup's last school committee meeting. And, uh, I don't think she's gonna be really sad about that. But I do wanna call her up because.
School committee did, um, want to present you with a gift.
We're gonna let you, uh, drive the audio visual program next year.
Oh my, whoever did this wrapping did a great job.
If the wrapping is good, that immediately means I'm not involved. Close.
It's for all the entertaining that you will now have time to do.
That is beautiful.
Oh, where's the cupcakes?
No cupcakes.
Where's the cupcakes on that plate?
No cupcakes. No cupcakes, thank you very much, I really appreciate this. So hard, I don't know. Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much. Do you accept hugs? Thank you so much for everything, really appreciate it, we'll miss you.
Thanks, Mary, good luck to you, good luck to you next, this coming year and the next two years after that.
Thank you.
I've known you forever. Been a long, long time, that's for sure. And Jenna, just much, yeah, good luck to you.
And she can tell, she's been watching these things, yeah.
You're doing great.
They are, everyone's doing a great job.
I know, I was horrified when I got the email saying, what do you want on the agenda?
Thank you very much, that is, that is really nice. Thank you, thank you again.
No, thank you very much. So Kathy was not only the staple of our meetings, but she was the person, as you said, who brought the meetings together because she just, you know, she was a, she was a patient person running those multiple versions of the agenda by us and saying, okay, is this the last version? Are you adding anything? Are you subtracting anything? And, uh, you know, you took all our notes, we relied on you for all that stuff and really, really appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for being patient with us, but we really appreciate everything that you've done.
Yep, and I just wanna say, Kathy in the office, when you, when you're having that day, Kathy will come out with that one thing to say that will just crack the entire office up. So as much as you think Kathy is patient and, and kind, which she is, she's also quite a wit in the office and will certainly let us have it. So thank you for that, we're gonna miss that sense of humor.
No, actually, here's the good thing, you can still come and crack the jokes without having to do the work. That's, that's even better. Thank you, Kathy.
My turn?
Wait.
No, I think so.
I'll wait.
I think we're good.
Okay, I'm done, anyway. Okay, so, um, I guess let's start. I did put the, uh, backup for the transfer into the folder. Um, so if you wanna just take a look at it, it'll just show you the account number, the, what account that is and then just the amount that we're gonna transfer.
So that's what we're down to?
Well, no, that's just what is needed to, um, so, let me be clear. There's already some money in the technology line. So we, so I'm just making up the difference from, um, our available funds. So there's still, um, funds available as of right now. Um, so this would just make it up to get us to the point where we're, we can purchase.
But these are the transfers that you were talking about?
Yes, correct, yes, yep, yep, yep.
So do we need to vote on these individually?
So I have a question.
Sure.
And you said there were, in the line item, there's already technology.
There's already money in the technology line item. That will, I, we need more money in that line item. So that's why we're transferring that eighty thousand dollars into there, which will then give us enough in that technology line to purchase our technology.
And that's about forty?
It's about forty-two thousand, some, something like that, yes.
And, and this was all really planned out?
Yes.
For the last few, few months that.
Yes.
When, when, when we got the audit findings back and then when we were doing the budget for this year, this, this was the plan on how we were gonna.
And I, I will say, um, there was a, an invoice that had come in for the project actually here. There was some miscommunication on that, um, technically, we would have been responsible for paying. And I forget how much it was, no, it was RichCo or something like that. I forget what the amount was. Um, we would have been responsible for it. And, um, I had some communication with Chris and he authorized the project to pay for that invoice because he knew we were in the process of using whatever funds we had available to accelerate the purchase, um, of technology. So that was, and I told him that was appreciated, um, we thanked him, but, so yes, to go to your point, it's been in the process for, um, for a while since we built the FY twenty budget and then since we decided to take it out of FY twenty and, um, get it in our hands before the end of the fiscal year. So, yeah.
Right, so again, do we, do we need, I don't, I don't remember what the, what the rules are with the dollar amount, so I think.
So we can.
Do this, but I think for next year, we should get some clarity around what we decided.
It is in our guidelines, so we should refresh our memories next time.
Just, just so that we're all on the same page.
We can, if, if, I, I can, let, let, let me suggest this. I can do the whole thing and you can ask whether or not everyone's okay with each one of these items or I can do one by line and then we can, you know, uh, transfer individually.
I mean, as, as far as I'm concerned, since it's really, um, it's really as an FYI to us and not required by law, I don't mind doing it all in a larger sum because it, we can see it here and it's part of our notes, it's a part of.
So I will make a motion to transfer the following amounts from, uh, the following accounts. Uh, from the East Meadow Special Education.
Contractual services.
Uh, contractual services. Uh, fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. From the high school supply, uh, Granby High School's general supplies line item, fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And that one is from which building?
It's just in general, yeah, it's just.
And from the, uh, heating of buildings line item, uh, fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars for a total of eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars transferred to technology management and contractual services support line item.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion have on this? Yeah, well, all, all, four?
Alright.
And all against?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for pulling that information.
Yes, I, I add it, um.
Thank you so we don't have to come back.
I'm just gonna say on camera that she told me I was gonna need to have it in there and. Okay? Yep, we'll just leave it at that, okay?
And, and you had some more, some more updates you wanted to give us too?
Yeah, so FY nineteen, so, yeah, um, again, the, the timing's a little off only because we're gonna do another warrant tomorrow. So there is a year date, just that run report that I've been giving on a monthly basis. It's gonna change, um, tomorrow. Um, so you'll see, you know, we're a little, we spent a little less percentage-wise than we did at this point last year, but that will change, um, once I, once I redo these numbers, once the warrant, um, is processed, which it already could be, if not, it'll be tomorrow morning and I'll update this and I'll, I'll send it out for everybody. Um, but that's just the standard report that we've been, um, you guys have been seeing. Um, any questions on that?
Um, the only thing I was gonna ask, I think you just kinda answered it. It's probably no, but was the vote we just took to buy that stuff part of the reason there's that, that gap between last year and this year?
Uh, no, no, it's just, I, again, it's just the timing of it. If the warrant would have hit today, and again, it could have, I think we'd be right up to the, to that ninety-two percent, we'd be there percentage-wise, so no.
Nope, okay.
And when you say the warrant, you're talking about some payroll, payroll warrants and all?
Yeah, right, so this is a big, like, invoice warrant is this week, yeah, so. Um, and I know there's, there's invoices on there that's not reflected in that number. So when that warrant hits, I'll update this number and share it with everybody. Um, FY twenty, for all those who don't know, our, the FY twenty budget was passed at, um, town meeting last week it was, yep. Um, so I'll be working on getting that into our financial system, making sure that's all set up so we're good to spend as of July first.
Also, thank you both for putting the budget documents on the website. So that they were available before the town meeting.
Mike, I know you had asked about, um, like timeline for meetings for next year and I just wanted to be clear, do you mean like for developing the FY twenty-one budget or for staying on pace, on track for the FY twenty budget?
So I, I was assuming that we were going to continue to do what you were doing this past year with, with one meeting a month, you were gonna give us the update? So my thought was, I really liked the way last year worked. But I also know that we can probably clean some things up a little bit more as, as, as we can always learn from things, right? Well, my hope was that you kept it in the back of your mind that, um, you can start to develop a rough timeline so that as we got closer to it, you can firm up those dates and, and keep everybody, you know, in line the way we needed to keep them in line this year.
Certainly, and we can also talk about, um. We can also talk about how, how you'd like to see the information, um, this upcoming year. I know this year we had talked about it and it wasn't really my budget, so I was kinda just giving the numbers that were in the system. But we collectively built the budget this year. Um, so if we wanna talk about how we want it presented at the second meeting of the month, then we can, we can talk about that. And, you know, if you wanna see it in more detail, less detail, however, but we can certainly talk about that.
I myself would like a little bit more detail.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Take other people who's kinda just go gray when you start talking numbers. But if we could figure out a way that kind of meets everybody in the middle, where there's a little bit more detail as to what's going on. Versus that one big number, you know, this year versus last year, which is helpful. But again, if we can get a little bit more detailed, in my opinion, it would be helpful. I know that's not everybody's.
Good. Chartwells, they, um, again, Ken and I both said, but we've obviously made some pretty big strides this year compared to the last few years. Um, to be honest, it's not like we did really anything that was like groundbreaking, but I, I think it was some things that were maybe neglected upon the last few years that we just needed, you know, somebody in that position full-time and, and, and comfortable in that position, which Ken's been in there a year, I've been here a year now. Um, so I, I think there's certainly work to be done, but we've, we've certainly made some, some strides from a few years ago, so. And next year, we already talked about it, that we'll, we'll have him, um, come maybe on just a quarterly basis, more than twice a year, um, to update everyone and kinda give just a, a state of food service, so, you know, everyone's on the same page.
So a, a, at what point do we share our predicted, uh, I've got numbers for next year as far as the students and so, so he can start his plan? Cause I, I, I thought that was a big issue for him a couple of years ago and I wanna make sure that. He's got the information he needs, right?
So, to be honest, I, so when I came in last year, all a lot of this stuff was already in place. So, um, I'll reach out to him and see what the process was in the past. If that's not the way we wanna do it, then I'll, I'll figure out a way on how to do it and how we wanna use that, those numbers. But I'm, we don't have much time to give him those numbers. Um, but we can give them, we stipulated in the contract how many students we had at the time the RFP went out last year. And there is language in there that we can obviously increase it if our enrollment increases or, or decreases. So I will review that and then I'll review with him how, um, it was done in the past and make sure that's the right way. And if it's not, then figure out the right way to do it.
No, I was just, just trying to think of ways that we can, like, you've got a good point, that September, he's got all the startup costs, he's gotta order like everything. So how, how do we help him get exactly what he needs so he doesn't overorder or underorder? I guess that's what I'm trying to go.
And we'll find out more in the next few weeks, you know, what we have for inventory. Um, again, what, what product prices will be for next year if we raise launch prices. So there's some, there's some variables in there that we can kind of control. Um, but yeah, we don't, we don't wanna get in the deficit in September and be working all year to get ourselves out of it. You know, just, obviously, it's just tough. So, yeah, whatever we can do to kinda help them, you know, hit the ground running in September would be great, so.
I just wanna put a few good years.
Yeah, and I, I, I understand, I, I certainly understand.
Get some of that bad stuff behind you.
Yes, I, I get it, I get it. Uh, I just had two more things real quick, so the East Meadow project, we're kinda winding down where we're gonna end up taking it over rather soon, but there are still some outstanding issues. Um, I know John Sullivan's been walking around with people from the state and I believe MSBA to kind of walk around and see what's out there still. Um, so just, just an FYI that we will at some point soon be, um, taking the building over as hours.
What is that time?
That's a good question, um, and I don't wanna speculate only because I, it's, I'm assuming it's based on if there are still repairs or things that need to be made that are still under the project's purview that we're gonna have them fix them before they officially release the building to us.
So we, we can probably reach out to the chair and vice chair of the committee. But I think, um, regardless, anybody can call a meeting, it would be good for us to have one more meeting to.
So that's kinda why I just wanted to mention something, so if, in case.
No, thank you for doing that.
It's gotta be the school building committee that signs off on it, it's not the school.
No, right, exactly, right, right.
I've been asking for months now, like it, to, like it looks like, for what, you know? This is our only chance to take care of the issues that they're straightening out before it becomes our issue.
Right.
So when you say the state is involved in those walkthroughs, does it also include the project team?
Yes, yep, yep, from, from what I understand, yes. And they're, they're the, you know, typical walkthroughs that they would be doing, you know, as the building becomes our responsibility. But I, I know there are still some, some issues that are outstanding that we will make sure get rectified prior to us.
Okay.
You know, receiving the building.
So wouldn't it still be the end of summer before this is over? Do you know, I mean, I, we have to have the school building committee to.
Yeah, I think that would be the best, I don't wanna speculate, yeah, I think it would just be best. I just kinda wanted to, that's basic information, I know, and just kinda put it out there.
Thank you for, for bringing it up.
Yep, and then, um, last thing is the high school roof. So the last thing that I know and, um, Principal Sullivan knows from the high school, who's also on the, that committee, um, they were out here a couple of weeks ago doing, taking asbestos samples, I believe, or samples to see if there's asbestos. Um, and that's the last thing that we know is going on. So I'm not sure if they have a meeting scheduled anytime soon, but, um, there's really no new information. So the contract had been awarded to the designer. Um, the designer was out to take those samples to see if there's asbestos. I'm assuming they're doing some findings and then, um, building the design based on that, but I don't know.
So no one's been chosen to, to the roof yet?
Hmm, as far as I know, which as far as the roof committee there, no, no one has been. Right.
Can you remind us the timeline for the project?
So was the July seventh, I believe, which is a Monday, I think, to August twenty-second or twenty-third?
Okay.
For?
Now that's for the actual construction to be completed.
I was gonna say, I, I mean, at some point, if they don't have this decided, I mean, at, at some point, they're not gonna be able to do it until, until next year, I would think, because.
Um, again, that's something I don't wanna speculate on. Um, again, that's something I don't wanna speculate on, I don't think that is an option, but I don't know, I'm not gonna speculate on it, I'm not sure, I don't think so. Um, I, all I'm saying is that there's no new information on the timeline, so, you know, for all intents and purposes, that's what the timeline is.
I guess I was gonna ask, when can we expect to see people on the roof?
You missed them those two.
You missed them a couple weeks ago, yeah, they were taking a sample of first basis.
Well, no, I mean, actually putting the new roof on.
Huh?
No, no, I mean, putting the new roof on.
Yes, yeah, I, I, I don't know, so.
So they haven't found a contract, um, someone to do the roof?
Yes, as, again, as far as I've been informed, there's no final design yet from the architect. So it went in two, two pieces. The bid went out to find a designer to design it, and then once that.
And did they send out a bid for?
Not yet, because I don't think that design has come back yet.
Kind of awful close.
Yeah, I know.
Hmm, so I will update, or, or maybe by next meeting, Steven will have a, an update, and he can share, or.
Who's on that committee?
Um, so Steve Sullivan, Steve Nally, and um.
John Sullivan?
No.
Oh.
And Glenn Sexton.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done then.
You've done enough.
I'm done, I tried to make it quick, but I guess not.
Alright, um, CES, we didn't, I mean, I, the only thing with CES is, I don't, I don't, I don't know if you wrote the letter yet, but um it occurred to me.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So yes, I did receive um an email, and their meeting is Wednesday.
Okay, cause I did, I was on the warrant signing subcommittee for them, and I realized after the vote, all of a sudden, two, two days later, I was starting to emails to sign warrants, I'm like, I don't think I can do this anymore.
I didn't get any more.
So I reached out to Bill, and I said, you know, Bill, I'm sorry, but like, we reorganized, and I, I'm not gonna be part of, I'm not gonna be the, the rep for CES, should I not sign? He's like, no, you can't sign it, so he then asked who, who was taking my place, I gave him your, your name, and I was just kinda waiting for that, for that.
She's on the, I saw her name on the information she forwarded to me, her name's on there representing Granby.
Okay.
Jen's name, contact, and everything, so.
Yeah, they've already sent, they've reached out, not that piece of it, but they have reached out to me.
Well, that was a separate piece, so when you go in September, they might do this reorg within themselves because a lot of school committees are gonna be doing a reorganization, I would assume, over the summer, so they may ask for people to volunteer for, for certain things.
So, yeah, we have, I have orientation this Wednesday.
Okay.
So it may happen then.
Okay, um, West Street School Building Committee, probably haven't met, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out and see how we can convene.
All the, all the other subcommittees, I don't, I don't see any, any changes, okay?
Right.
Um, so now do I have to read this whole vote to enter into?
Yes.
Cause you said you have an executive session?
Sorry?
We, there's, we have an executive session, right?
So vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part A Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session.
Jim, Beatrice?
Aye.
Jen Nella?
Aye.
Henry Evans?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.